Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is December 5th, 2018. We're holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. The order of business will be as follows. We'll start with honor and excellence, followed by the CEO report, then we will go into public participation, and then we will adjourn and go into executive session, and then we will return to start our voting process. As always, I'd like to remind everyone that courteous and civil behavior is both desired and expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us into pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rescheduled meeting of Wednesday, December 5th, 2018, is hereby called order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Garza?
Present.
Vice President Guzman?
Present.
Member Dr. Hines?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
President Clark?
Present.
Thank you. Five members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Joseph Moriarty, our General Counsel, Latonya McDade, our Chief Education Officer, Mary Bradley, as Executive Director of Innovation and Incubation, and Aisha Ahmed, our Honorary Student Board Member this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Chief McDade.
Good morning, everyone. We begin each Board of Education meeting by recognizing the talents and accomplishments of our students and our school communities. Today, we welcome students and staff from Palmer Elementary School, which was awarded the Exemplary Reading Program Award from the International Literacy Association. This organization recognizes outstanding reading and language arts programs in schools across the nation. Just three schools in the entire country were selected to receive the Exemplary Reading Program Award for 2018, and Palmer is one of them. This is clear evidence of the incredible things that are happening at this diverse neighborhood school. Every classroom at Palmer has a library organized by genre and by level. All students have daily opportunities to listen to fluent, read alouds, and engage in independent reading, and Palmer hosts many family and community events focused on literacy. The school also partners with Bernie's Book Bank, a local business that provides each student with a bag of books to take home twice a year, and there's an annual field trip to the local library where students in the primary grades receive their very first public library card. These examples barely scratch the surface of what Palmer is doing to promote literacy among students and staff. This school showcases the best of what CPS has to offer, and we are grateful to the International Literacy Association for recognizing their success. Please join me in congratulating Principal Jennifer Dixon, her students who are here with her today, and the entire Palmer School community on their prestigious award.
My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I'm the Principal of Palmer Elementary School. Palmer School was awarded the International Literacy Association's Exemplary Reading Program Award for 2018. As stated, in 2018, only three schools were given this designation. Palmer's literacy program is entirely teacher-created and standards-aligned, and it engages students and provides them all with an equitable literacy experience. I want to move on now. I know each of the board members has a packet with that essay that I wrote to apply for the award, but I have four exemplary Palmer students here who would like to share their experiences, and they wrote this speech themselves, as well as the manner in which it's being presented.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are Noah, Amaya, Peter, and Pedro. We are sixth graders from Palmer Elementary School, and today we are here to speak to you about what makes Palmer spectacular in our amazing reading curriculum.
Not only is the school spectacular, but so are the people. Ms. Dixon, teachers, and staff are always looking out for our best interests.
Palmer has had many different activities, such as the Reality Store, which showed students how to manage money. Palmer has partnered with the College Financial Aid Administration Association.
Palmer has gotten many trophies from our sports teams. For example, the fifth, sixth boy soccer team won the 2018 championship.
In reading, students have never had to have textbooks in front of their faces.
We are engaged with the text.
Students learn unique lessons by reading books they are interested by.
One lesson I learned from reading Percy Jackson and the Lightning Thief is that actions speak louder than words.
One lesson I learned by reading Touching Spiritbar is that people can change and see the world in different perspectives.
One lesson I learned by reading Edward Tulane is that it's never too late to change your ways.
Palmer has been our school home since kindergarten, and we are excited to complete our elementary education at a school that thrives at challenges and prepares us for the next chapter.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Obvio.
Before the students leave, before you leave, that was, I don't know how much you had to rehearse to do it so well. Just one day, that's really quite impressive, but you know the other thing that's impressive? I was trying to think, sixth grade. Sixth graders are what, 11, 12? Just remarkable. That was well done, and you wrote that yourself?
Yes.
What can I say? There's a future for all of you. Any other board member with any other comments? Okay, thank you so much.
And thank you, Principal Dixon, for your leadership and your commitment. I'm also thrilled to share with you that one of our very own counselors, Mr. Brian Coleman, was recently named School Counselor of the Year by the American School Counselor Association. Brian serves as a school counselor at Jones College Prep High School, and anyone who's had the pleasure of working with him knows how deserving he is of this national recognition. Mr. Coleman meets every student where they are and helps them develop and grow their own unique gifts. We've seen this in Mr. Coleman's work with the school mentorship program and through his leadership of Jones Pride. We've also seen it in his commitment to social-emotional learning, which is as important to Mr. Coleman as the academics and post-secondary accomplishments that Jones College Prep is known for. We hope to invite Mr. Coleman to the January Board meeting to be able to provide celebrations and acknowledgement of him in person for his accomplishments, but we wanted to announce that, this recent award, because it's something that all of CPS is so extremely proud of. This is the, you can clap for Mr. Coleman. This is the time of year when we tend to count our blessings, and I personally have a lot to be grateful for in 2018. It was just about a year ago that I accepted the role of Chief Education Officer, and it's been a humbling and eye-opening experience. I've been a part of the CPS family since I was an elementary school student, so I thought I knew pretty much everything about our district, or at least thought I knew it pretty well, but serving in this leadership role has given me a brand-new perspective. I've had an opportunity to visit many types of CPS schools since I started as Chief Education Officer, from magnet to charter, neighborhood to STEM, and IB-focused schools, and I've been amazed by the progress that's happening in our classrooms across this great city. I've seen the positive impact of our teachers and our school leaders on a broader scale, and you got a glimpse of that from Palmer today, and have watched as dedicated professionals from across this district have come together in support of our children. I'm so grateful for the opportunity that I have to serve our students, our staff, and our school communities in such an extraordinary way, and I really want to just take this time to thank everyone who's helped me to grow in this role in this first year, and look forward to helping our CEO and this district move forward to even greater heights in 2019. Last month, we were happy to announce three new industry partners who will be supporting Solario Academy, Crane Medical, and Infinity Math and Science Academy, the district's new early college STEM schools next fall. Rush University Medical Center, a longstanding partner of Crane Medical Preparatory High School and City Colleges, will provide additional mentorship, paid internships, support staff and scholarships to students from the school. Verizon and the Chicago Department of Information Technology will partner to support Infinity Math and Science and Technology High School, and they will provide enrichment, professional development, and project-based learning experiences and opportunities for workplace and career exposure for all students. Salesforce is partnering with Solario Academy High School to provide new technology, academic acceleration, and teacher training. This investment will give an additional 2,000 students access to 21st-century STEM curriculum while providing unprecedented opportunities to earn college credits and moves the district closer to our goal of 50% of graduating seniors earning early college and career credits by 2019. Last month, we also announced that eight additional elementary schools will offer dual-language programming beginning in the 2019-2020 school year. The diversity of our district is our greatest asset, and by investing and building upon the success of dual-language programs such as the Seal of Biliteracy, we're enabling schools to develop bilingualism, biliteracy, and a shared cultural understanding among English learners and native speakers. Next fall, dual-language programming will serve a total of 35 schools throughout the city, and we look forward to expanding the program even further through our academic-focused request-for-proposal process, which CEO Jackson will provide an update on in her CEO's report. And at this time, I would like to transition to Dr. Jackson for the CEO's report.
Thank you, Chief McDade. First, I'd like to start by echoing my excitement around the expansion of programmatic investments, in particular around dual-language. Since starting as the Chief Ed Officer in 2015, we have more than doubled those opportunities in Chicago public schools, which is something that I take great pride in. I would also like to echo Chief McDade's gratitude for a successful first year. Like everyone that is new in their role, we've learned a lot, but I entered this role with a great degree of excitement and humility, because leading Chicago public schools is a tremendous responsibility and, as I've said before, a professional dream of mine. I think most people who know that CPS is a big part of my personal story, so I wanted to do the best job that I could for the students, the families, and the incredible educators that I have the opportunity to serve and represent. I'm pleased with the progress that we've made so far this first year, but I also want to recognize and acknowledge that there is still much work that needs to be done in order for us to serve every single school community effectively. This has been the purpose of our recent community workshops around the ARA, which stands for the Annual Regional Analysis, which I'm happy to say has been overall a very positive and thought-provoking experience. It's been a chance for me and Chief McDade to hear from our families and community members about what's working well, where we need to do better, and what resources would improve the experience for their children, of the children in their schools. We have a few more meetings to go, so if you have not had an opportunity to attend one of those regional meetings, please check the calendar on the cps.edu website for more information. I think you'll find them to be extremely informative meetings. We are also moving forward to the second phase of the academic-focused request-for-proposal process. This process, we announced earlier this year, that allows for school principals and leaders to complete an application for a change of academic focus for their school. This year, we received 114 letters of intent from school leaders spanning nine different programmatic areas and representing every single region in the city. After thoroughly reviewing all of these letters, we have invited 70 schools back to submit a full proposal. We look forward to reviewing these proposals in early January and making investments for the next school year that have the voice of the school communities represented front and center. So I look forward to providing an update at our next meeting about this process. This new process is a part of my commitment to ensure more transparency and better communication with our students and families in the district. It is also a part of my vision to make sure that every single neighborhood has high-quality options from pre-K through high school graduation. We know that developing high-quality neighborhood schools is critically important for our families, and I remain committed to that work. Earlier this week, a legal opinion was issued that prevents the district from establishing a much-needed neighborhood high school in the near-south community. While we remain fully committed to creating a high-quality neighborhood high school in the near-south community, we will not be appealing the ruling due to the potential disruption to children that further legal action may create. Well, thank you. And the considerable amount of time needed that's necessary to establish a strong high school. Although we will not be moving forward with the transition plan, we must ensure and still meet our goal of having a high-quality option in the near-south community. And for that, I want to publicly state that we are committed to exploring ways to strengthen the existing high school options in the near-south community, and we will be working collaboratively with the residents to do just that. At this time, I would like to transition and present three presentations to the board today. One around our new student information system. We would also like to go into more depth around our recent risk assessment for the school system, and then finally end by providing a response to the charter school proposals that were submitted to CPS this school year. I would like to turn things over to our Chief Information Officer, Mr. Phil DiBartolo, who will walk us through an in-depth presentation of the new Aspen system. This will be our new student information system for the district. In the past, teachers and principals would have to juggle between multiple applications to enter grades, track student progress, and do a myriad of tasks that educators must do every single day. I've said this in the past, but it is our hope that Aspen will consolidate all of these functions and, in the end, be a one-stop shop for educators to access on a daily basis. I will turn it over now for Phil to give us an overview and walk us through the change management process. Thank you.
Thank you. President Clark, Dr. Jackson, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm joined by Patrick Gallagher, who's the Director of Student Information Systems, and has guided nothing less than a Herculean effort to get us to this point. Very quickly, our agenda will be to take you through some project background. We'll discuss the stakeholder benefits of the new system, explain one of the questions that we get quite frequently, why are we migrating mid-year, talk a bit about our change management approach, and the new parent portal. For some project background, CPS selected Follett Aspen to replace three of the major components of our current student information system, SIM, Gradebook, and Verify. It was a highly inclusive process where we engaged with over 100 school-based resources to help us craft over 1,200 documented functional requirements. Relative to the solicitation, we pressure-tested by having Gardner Research take a look at our RFP, and they labeled it best-of-breed. Shortly thereafter, we were contacted by Dallas, Houston, and Baltimore, who all used our template for subsequent student information system solicitations. The goal of the project isn't only to revamp the current student information system application portfolio, but to consolidate it. Currently, teachers have to navigate a series of modular systems throughout the day to manage a classroom. This often comes at the expense of instructional minutes, which is something that we just have to improve upon. In addition, this affects all school-based network administrative personnel working for Chicago public schools, as well as students and parents that currently leverage the portal. Internally on the IT side, it allows CPS to reduce its data center footprint because we'll be hosting with Follett Aspen, reduce spend on custom data movement routines, and it consolidates vendor accountability. A word on the data movement routines. Currently, we spend between $1 and $2 million a year for care and feeding of the routines that move data between all of these operational systems. That's a direct cost, but the true expense for us is the opportunity cost, because we spend a lot of time moving data around instead of working on usability enhancements that make the system just a better experience for all of our users. Key benefits for stakeholders for teachers: The system is device-agnostic. Any device, tablet, laptop, desktop, or smartphone will be able to use this software. It is responsive design, so it renders fine on any mobile device. It has configurable data views that provide flexibility beyond canned reports. We often hear that teachers, principals, like to slice and dice information their own way, so this offers views that allows them to do so. As well, the consolidated view of student profile information and the ability to directly link to the SSM application, which is used for our 504 plans and IEPs. Currently, this requires logging in and out for every single time you want to hop over. Now, there is a single login, and for the rest of the day, you can flip back and forth between the systems to check IEPs directly from Follett Aspen, hopefully saving a lot of time for teachers and case managers. For students and parents, again, it's a mobile-friendly portal, and it has robust student data that goes beyond the grades and attendance that they're available to them today. For administrators, it helps to eliminate data latency between those systems. So as I mentioned earlier, we're constantly feeding information between these five systems, so it doesn't necessarily give a real-time sense or the same picture between these different systems, which puts educators at a distinct disadvantage. This will simplify onboarding and training for new principals, given that they'll have one platform to really focus on instead of five, and it also gives improved handling on part-time and dual enrollment situations, which our current system really doesn't handle too well. One of the questions we're getting quite often is why switch mid-year? Launching on the first day of school inherently is the busiest time of year for us, and we wanted to avoid any operational disruption. As important, we've done a lot to train a number of change champions, and I'll talk about that in a moment, and if we were to train them this year, wait the whole summer, and then do the implementation, we're worried that some of that knowledge might get stale. As well, it takes a full week to transfer hundreds of millions of records from one system to the other, and there was not really a good time to do that in the month of August, given that we know that folks are coming back to schools that early to broker athletics programs and things of that nature. As well, our own history tells us that launching on the first day of school can be problematic. 2006, 2007, we all know that the IMPACT system had well-publicized issues for the first week, and we wanted to avoid that. As well, LA Unified in 2014 had a very similar experience with children sitting in gymnasiums waiting for their schedules to be completed. A bit on change management. Up on the screen, you see the change management calendar. This summer, we trained roughly 1,300 change champions with our school-based resources. We decided to kind of take a break for the first month of schools to not cause any operational disruption or distraction during that very busy time. And then on October 1st, we launched a sandbox. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but essentially, the sandbox is a place where teachers and school staff can access the system as it will appear when we go live and have the opportunity to actually look at their own data and rosters for additional confirmation. We plan on shutting down the sandbox on 12/21 after schools have completed a series of readiness exercises, and between 12/21 and January 7th, we'll be performing that aforementioned data migration and subsequent quality control checks. Shortly after we go live, we will begin the training for scheduling. We want to have all of the elementary and high school schedules essentially set so that we have a smooth start of school next year. Again, if we were to start at the beginning of the year, we would not have been able to do that smoothly. There are three essential components to our change management process. The first was to involve change champions. So we asked principals to identify a number of change champions at their school, depending on the size of the student body, that would serve as our boots on the ground and our partners in helping to ensure that the transition was a smooth one for all of our schools. This has been an enriching experience for us, because I happened to come into the district at the tail end of the IMPACT rollout, and one of the things that we saw was that a lot of the folks that were kind of driving the effort in the direction were external consultants and not folks in our schools. So partnering with the change champions didn't only allow us an opportunity to train them, but they absolutely trained us to help us to get tethered in what is realistic at a school and kind of how all of those subtle processes work. Change champions received a two-part stipend for assisting us in this work, a $250 stipend at the beginning, and they'll receive a $1,250 stipend on the completion of readiness exercises later this month. The second major component of our change management strategy was to open a sandbox. As I stated previously, the sandbox was open on October 1st. It's using the real hardware, the real data that we'll be using when we go live. Thus far, over two-thirds of school-based users have logged in, and we are actively measuring schools' progress on readiness exercises. Again, we'll be going offline December 21st. There's a key point that's not listed on the slide that I'd like to mention. One of the ancillary benefits of launching a sandbox is that we populate it with real student data. In essence, this allows us to practice that data migration over and over and over again, so it goes smoothly while we're doing that over Christmas break. As well, what we're actively doing, I think, four or five different iterations, is load testing in that environment with the real setup and the real data to ensure that we have adequate performance on day one. This is a question I get quite a bit. So a little bit more on performance tuning. One of the qualifiers for the RFP is we wanted to have Follett Aspen actually go through and show us load test results based on a series of daily exercises that schools would go through, and we found that a side-by-side performance measurement that it outperformed our current student information systems. As well, the platform itself is used in British Columbia that has a single-instance database of 600,000 students, so we feel confident that our performance is going to be tuned appropriately for day one. The third component is a change toolkit, which is a fairly robust website for our change champions that includes videos, concise exercises, and pacing guides. Basically, this is the project team support forum for all of our local school change champions. To provide a degree of transparency for the board, I've included a slide. We surveyed all of our change champions after they were trained to see if they were satisfied with what we did for them, and obviously, we feel that we did a good job. We can always do better, but I wanted to be able to provide the board with some direct feedback from the change champions that we engaged. Obviously, 74 sessions, 30 trainers, seven locations, and just under 1,300 change champions trained. Another important note, the folks that trained the change champions themselves were also school-based resources. So again, we thought it was very important to remain tethered in tapping those school-based resources to make sure that we were aligned appropriately. Just a quick exemplar, this is a picture of our change champion toolkit website. There's a communications forum that is actively monitored by my team. We have lots of information coming in, lots of questions from change champions. There are training guides, pacing activities, a series of videos, and some suggestions for best practice for training methods. We recognize that every school, every principal, has the autonomy to try to make sure that the method at their location is suitable for their working day, but we do offer some best practices for them. It was very important and something was made, you know, very clear to us from Dr. Jackson, that we had to incorporate the voice of the customer in this work. So an additional tool that we deployed as part of the change champion paradigm was we opened a platform called Receptive. This is a democratic process that allows our users to vote on the features they want to see. Historically, that is typically dictated by dialogue that happens at central office, so we're very excited now that we're petitioning our 1,250 to 1,300 change champions for their input on the enhancements that we need to prioritize in the system. The way that this works, change champions will suggest an enhancement, the remaining change champions vote on it, and that sets the deck for a prioritization. I'm happy to say that thus far, 53 requests for enhancement have already been released in the sandbox, and we have another 14 planned to be released in the near future. This is just the start. The Receptive tool is something that I plan to implement broadly across all information technology platforms, because I think thus far, it's proven pretty effective for us, and more importantly, it really gives our customers and schools a true voice in our Another method that we're using to track that schools are on a good trajectory for day one is we've created Aspen readiness metrics. This is a list of success metrics tracking school use of the sandbox relative to six basic day-one Aspen tasks that I'll talk about in a moment. But the long and short of it is that this is a measurement tool, not for punitive purposes, but we want principals to see where their teachers and resources stand relative to completing the various preparedness exercises. Again, an important note here is that, you know, this is not a punitive measure. This is really a tool, so that schools can make sure that they're marching along the right path. Once we hit 12/21, we'll be taking the readiness metrics down. There's no subsequent measurement after that. Again, here's just a sampling of the on-track exercises. These exercises constitute really the key pieces that we're asking all folks to go through. We've been through this several times, and I can tell you that the maximum amount of time to perform these tasks is listed on the page, but in reality, in most cases, and we've looked at a number of people who've gone through these exercises, it often takes a little bit less time than this, but this gives you a good barometer of the maximum amount of time we expect it would take for any resource to go through the activity. A few words on the parent portal. Wanted to tip my hat to Chip Johnson and the FACE team. They've been absolutely outstanding in helping us with outreach to parents on the parent portal. They've provided some email communications to principals with instructions on how to use an Aspen intro letter to engage their parent population. And we also plan on a number of activities over the next six weeks to make sure that schools and parents and students all know what's coming relative to the parent portal. Again, we're very excited about the parent portal, because it'll allow a bit more robust data view than it does to data view than it does today. One thing that bears mentioning, parents will have to reset the accounts. The accounts that we have today don't currently come over. Part of the reason is that those passwords are passwords that we don't know. There are also a number of accounts that are fairly stale, so a reset in this regard, we think, is going to be useful. The ancillary benefit for the new model is that the way that the new system works is that provision of an email address will enable the parents to establish an account, and it doesn't require a lot of overhead on the schools as it does today by generating PIN numbers and things like that. So we hope to relieve some of the administrative burdens that the schools currently feel in managing the parent and student portals. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Board member, comments, questions? Go ahead, Al.
President Clark, thank you. Phil, thank you again for your very complete explanation and rationale for something very important for us, for the schools and for the board and the parents to keep us updated on something that moves so quickly, so often. In the beginning of your talk, you mentioned, and I missed it, I wonder if you could elaborate on it, instructional minutes that need to be improved upon?
Basically, what we've seen in classrooms is that teachers are spending too much time trying to navigate these systems, and that almost invariably comes at the expense of FaceTime with students. This is something we have to fix. Technology, I've said this before, should be ubiquitous and invisible. If we're talking about technology in a classroom, it means it's not working. Technology shouldn't be the story, it should be the support apparatus for teachers, and right now, they're incredibly bogged down by having to navigate five systems. We desperately want to fix that.
Can I add something?
Sure, absolutely.
One example I like to give is, we talked about the mobile-friendly aspect of it. So for teachers, today, they have to go back to take attendance, they have to go back to their computer, log on to the system, and actually go through and take attendance at their computer. Today, they'll be able to do it on a cellphone or on a tablet, which will, if we can win back a minute or two of instruction time for every class, that'll be a big win just doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple. The first one that comes to mind, with this new system, are we going to have any issues with cybersecurity?
We feel very strong about security. It will be available behind the VPN, so it's not just generally accessible from home machines. It is role-based security, so every role, for example, teachers can only see their students, principals can only see the students in their schools, and we had them go through a very robust series of security screenings as we vetted the solution. We feel confident that we're going to be secure, sir.
I'm sure you are. We talked about this in the briefing. In my experience, when there's mobile access, security becomes a little bit more of an issue. You've given a strong answer, but it is a concern, and obviously, you're confident you wouldn't be going forward if you felt there was a gap.
I feel from the technical standpoint, we're sound, as always. It really comes down to practice, and are doing a good job training people on best practice with what to do with, you know, FERPA-related student data. And that's something we have to remain constantly vigilant on. As I've stated before, in front of the board, there is no finish line to that work. So relative to the technical platform, we feel very confident. Relative to, you know, school-side and district-wide processes for managing data, we have to remain constantly vigilant to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Another question. I remember, this is decades old, so I don't necessarily believe you have the same problem, but I remember I've been involved in several relatively large system changes where we were putting in a completely new system, some kind of a customer-based system, or a vendor-based system, but on one occasion, I recall, very smart people made the decision to shut the old system down because they thought they were ready to completely implement the new system, and there were some issues, significant issues. In this particular case, as I was listening to how this rolls out, are we at any time dismantling what we have today, or are we doing that only after we completely integrate the new system?
Did you want to speak to that?
Sure.
I mean, I can take it, but I figured you might want to chat.
No, I mean, we are going to be bringing down some of our systems that we talked about, the IMPACT systems themselves. They will still be in a state if for some reason, as a contingency plan, we need to go back to those, they'll be ready to do that. We're not bringing them down in its entirety. But we are, and we think the mitigating factor is the sandbox itself. We've had over 20,000 people look at the system and actually use the system right now. But we're hoping to, we are going to be shutting those systems off, but they're going to be still online and usable if we need them for mitigation purposes.
So even if we're setting, I'm repeating what you just said, just to make sure what I heard is what you said. You are going to shut some systems down, but those systems will be retrievable if needed. They're not being shut down and shut off.
That's correct, yes. So they're going to be available if we need them, and if we need a fallback plan, they are our primary fallback plan to go back.
I say that because in my entire history, I never saw one technology integration plan work as planned.
GO CPS, I would throw out there.
Sorry, Dr. Jackson, I stand absolutely corrected.
I think that's an important point. This is a major initiative. This is akin to United Airlines changing their online ticketing system. I mean, this is the core of our business, a lot of our funding reports, there's just so much that is tied to student information. We feel that we have done as good a job as we can to make sure that we offset major issues. There will very likely be hiccups along the way, nothing major that will cause operational disruption, but I would just simply be disingenuous to say it's going to go perfect and there isn't going to be a single problem. It's whether or not we've exercised the requisite due diligence to put mitigation plans in place to deal with those issues, and I feel we've done so.
Yeah, let me go back and correct my statement. With the exception of GO CPS, I've had limited experience where things have gone the way as planned, but as long as you have safeguards in place, no, there's no expectation that there will be no problems. It's that, you know, you don't want the problems to be acute. I just have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Focusing, you had 85%, if I recall that chart, 85% of the people that you train, teachers that you train, that were either, thought the process was very good or outstanding, I forget the categories you used. Right, okay, above average or outstanding, that's roughly 85%. I'm focusing on the 15% that had a different experience, maybe 180 people. That's not an insignificant number. What were their problems?
I'm going to let you take that one.
Well, about 13 of those said it was average, so, you know, it depends how you want to look at it. It wasn't a negative experience for the needs improvement or poor categories that we showed adds up to about, just under 3%. So there's always, I think, because we're doing it in seven different locations, sometimes there's, we try to make it very continuity across all the different training sessions, but we would have different trainers. As I think Phil mentioned, we're using some of the teacher resources, some administrative resources from the schools, augmenting our staff as well. So sometimes, the experience wasn't quite as even as people would have expected, and we may have gotten an average rating in those particular instances. But we did get very, very few negative results coming through, and I think for something like this, we could expect something. Sometimes, some of the volunteers and the change champions may have been there and not wanted to be there that summer, even though they were getting a stipend paid if they completed the course. So we did see a little bit of negativity, but overall, I think these are very good numbers, and we're very happy with them.
I can add, with some of the feedback that I got, was that it wasn't enough. So it's a big system, there's a lot of things you can do, and I think some folks felt that maybe they could use a little bit more training. So that's anecdotal, and it's some feedback that I've gotten, you know, offline, but that's as much detail as I can provide on that point.
What you're telling me is, we don't have 180 people who felt they weren't adequately trained.
That's not the feedback that I've received.
No, that's what you're telling me.
That's correct.
Yeah, because I lumped the average, the 12.9 average in, that's how I got 15%.
I would as well.
Yeah, okay, but you're telling me and the board that we do not have 180 people who felt they weren't adequately trained.
I believe that's the case, sir.
Good. Okay, I don't have any other questions, board members? Good.
All right. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Phil and Patrick. Presentation number two, I'm going to call Jenny Bennett, our Chief Financial Officer, to discuss the FY19 Enterprise Risk Management Assessment. It's important to note that for the past year since I took on the role of CEO, that we have been engaged in an in-depth and comprehensive risk management assessment process. The goal of this was to identify any key risks, but more importantly, the opportunities that the district faced, so that we can ensure that we're mitigating those risks to the best of our ability. The enterprise risk management assessments are crucial for any large organization, and I have charged our team with conducting a thorough assessment that clearly identifies key risks that CPS must manage in order to be a successful organization. Rooted in industry best practices, our assessment involves discussions with leaders in every part of the organization, and we analyze risks through a student-based lens. Jenny will now walk us through the assessment in greater detail and provide more insight into how we make the students the center focus of our risk assessment. Thank you, Jenny.
Good morning, President Clark, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Jenny Bennett, I'm the CFO for CPS. I'm pleased to present to you today a summary of the findings of the fiscal year 19 Enterprise Risk Assessment. An enterprise risk assessment is an entity-wide assessment which allows a district to take time to reflect on key risks that may impact the mission and the vision. Importantly, as Dr. Jackson stated, this process started a year ago in January of 2018, when CEO Jackson called for a review of key risks facing the district with her leadership team. Out of this initial review came a further request from the CEO to expand the review into a formal enterprise risk assessment, which kicked off in August of 2018. The enterprise risk assessment presentation starts with a description of the mission, the vision, and our core principles for two reasons. For one, it's helpful to remind us of why we're here, to provide a high-quality public education for every child in every neighborhood that prepares each for success in college, career, and civic life. In short, educating Chicago's children should be what drives us to do what we do every day. Secondly, internal audit best practices recommend that all good enterprise risk assessments start with the mission, vision, and core values, as laid out in their framework for best practices for internal audit. These are defined in the Committee of Sponsoring Organizations of the Treadway Commission, or COSO, which is a joint initiative that's developed best practice frameworks and guidance on enterprise risk management, or ERM. As outlined in the COSO ERM framework, quote, "Mission, vision, and core values define what an entity strives to be and how it wants to conduct business. They communicate to stakeholders the purpose of the entity," unquote. Core values, or as we've termed it in the presentation here and in our mission and vision, the core principles, are ways in which we can make progress towards that mission. The core principles of the district are highlighted on the page, which include high-quality, rigorous instruction, talented and empowered educators, safety and support, collective impact, and financial stability. The core principles also provide us with a framework for how we begin to evaluate CPS's universe of responsibilities and functionality, and ultimately, the risks that arise from those functional areas. This is the risk universe, which is detailed on the slide. In the fiscal year 19 Enterprise Risk Assessment, we have more closely aligned the risk universe with the core principles of the mission and vision, and have made this risk universe more student-centric. This risk universe has a new and expanded section on academics, as well as student safety and wellness. These expanded and more detailed sections not only represent the fact that as a school district, a significant portion of our functionality and work lies with students, but also highlights the priorities that CPS leadership has identified internally, that students come first. Additionally, we would like to note that our enterprise risk assessment has been developed from best practices guidelines provided by COSO, the Institute of Internal Auditors, as well as KPMG. Additionally, KPMG has served as a resource and advisor to us throughout this process, given their level of expertise with enterprise risk assessment and management countrywide. On page five, we've provided a few COSO guidelines on enterprise risk management that's important to highlight, some of which I've already discussed. One additional point to make is that COSO calls for enterprise risk management to be a continuous process. There's a distinction between enterprise risk assessment and enterprise risk management. Identifying the risks, as is typical in a risk assessment, is only the first step. Value is created when a comprehensive strategy for mitigating those risks are developed and implemented. In order to ensure enhanced performance, which we've laid out in this COSO graphic to the right, we start with the mission, vision, and core values, move on to strategy, business objectives, and performance, and the ultimate goal is to have enhanced performance. We have included this risk assessment in the strategies of the district, and it's also important that senior leadership take ownership of this risk assessment process. To that end, in the fiscal year 2019 Enterprise Risk Assessment, we have been highly transparent and collaborative across the district, and this was significantly expanded from the fiscal year 2017 Enterprise Risk Assessment. CPS conducted over three times the number of interviews with three times the number of individuals versus 2017. 29 departments were interviewed in fiscal year 2019 versus just the 10 in 2017, and over 39 validation interviews were conducted versus none in 2017, and an additional emailed and in-person validations were conducted post the initial validations. CPS conducted two facilitated sessions with over 20 members of executive leadership versus the one in 2017. This expanded process is not only important to create ownership by senior management in risks outlined to you today, but also to ensure the accuracy of the information being presented and that it reflects the views of the entire district and senior leadership. As a part of this expanded transparency is the fact that this presentation is being made to the board and to the public today. We want to ensure that the public has the opportunity to hear about key risks that we face as a district and the strategies we're taking to reach our goals. Also, in the fiscal year 2019 Enterprise Risk Assessment, we have broadened the objective beyond informing our internal audit plan, but we have also engaged in a broader dialogue and implementation of a culture and ownership around the enterprise risk assessment and management, as well as created a more direct linkage with our existing strategic organizational plans to ensure ongoing implementation. On the subsequent pages, we have begun to highlight some of the key risks and opportunities. Before I go through the risks in detail, I want to highlight the fact that risks and opportunities are two sides to the same coin. The COSO framework indicates that an organization must engage in decision-making with an awareness of both the opportunities for creating value and the risks that challenge the organization in creating value. In that vein, we have highlighted both the risks and opportunities available to CPS when risks are mitigated, as well as a few key mitigating strategies being undertaken to address these risks. It's important to note that all of the mitigating strategies employed by the districts are not on these slides. These are really just a few highlighted key mitigating strategies. So to just start going through some of the risks highlighted here, the first is cyber and information security. We heard a little bit about that in the previous presentation. This is a risk that's newer for most organizations broadly, not just CPS, and is also never-evolving and innovating space. The district has implemented extensive mitigation strategies for this risk, including conducting system-wide analyses and monitoring for detecting hacking, malware, and viruses, a state-of-the-art intrusion detection system, as well as an operations center to better monitor potential system weaknesses. And finally, CPS was able to secure cyber liability insurance coverage due to the extensive nature of the protections already in place. Enrollment, CPS has experienced a continued trend of declining enrollment, which can have an impact on academic accomplishments, our finances, equity and allocation of resources, among a number of other areas. Key mitigating strategies here include the expansion of full-day pre-K, which will help address some of the declining birth rates and their impact on enrollment in the early grades. The annual regional analysis, which we heard a little bit about earlier in the board meeting, which includes a fairly extensive set of focus groups and community engagement dialogue to engage in a course around enrollment in the district. CPS is also conducting an RFP, as we talked about earlier, to create better allocation of programming across the district. GO CPS has provided better transparency to families with an online platform that allows for facilitation of the application process. We've also partnered with various other city, state, and sister agencies and nonprofits to address broader socioeconomic demographic issues that are the core to our enrollment trends. And we've also engaged in a number of programs to help support our immigrant and refugee populations, which can also impact enrollment as well. Under equity, equitable allocation of resources is clearly a huge component to our mission. The non-equitable allocation of resources can negatively impact student outcomes, as well as drive an achievement gap, which is contrary to our mission. Key mitigating strategies here include the establishment of the Equity Officer, as well as the appointment of our Chief Equity Officer, Maurice Sweeney. The program application RFP, as well as the annual regional analysis, also supports this work, and we have created a small schools fund in the budget as well to help with under-enrolled Federal, state, and local compliance, this risk is fairly broad, but extends across a number of risks. Our goal is to maximize the efficient use of federal and state revenues and align CPS procedures with state and federal values. Key mitigating strategies include the fact that we do conduct extensive annual audits, and in our most recent audit had no findings. Budget and grants also works closely with the schools to ensure compliance, which includes the creation of the federal compliance training manual. And as we just heard, a new student information system will increase our data availability and quality of the data for federal, state, and local compliance reasons. Under Under funding, funding is a risk that has been significantly greater in previous years, but still remains a risk to CPS, especially as we continue to have the need to resolve a structural budget gap on a yearly basis, and we also maintain limited reserve levels, as well as continue to borrow on a short-term basis for operating costs. Some key mitigating strategies to this include the fact that we've secured $900 million in new revenues between fiscal year 17 and 18, and continue to advocate for full funding from the state, full and fair funding from the state. We've also secured rating agency upgrades, reduced our short-term borrowing by $455 million between 17 and 18, and also reduced interest costs and refinanced outstanding debt for savings. Under infrastructure, we continue to work towards creating a safe and supportive environment, which includes the goal of providing children with safe, warm, and dry facilities. Key mitigating strategies here include the fairly large fiscal year 19 capital program, which addresses deferred maintenance needs, overcrowding relief, as well as programmatic investments across the district, as well as increased accountability around the school cleanliness. Under procurement, CPS continues to work towards strengthening the vendor selection and management process, as well as training on policies and procedures to protect employees in the district. Key mitigating strategies here include enhanced vendor review through due diligence and background checks, as well as improved reporting and analysis of MWBE vendors and subcontractors. Under special ed, CPS's goal is to provide tools, support, and funding to ensure that all diverse learners receive a high-quality public education. As a district, we face challenges to this goal based on various other risks outlined today. Key mitigating strategies for this risk includes the principal professional learning communities, where we provide principal training to improve delivery of special education services in each network. A year-long series of over 130 principal trainings was conducted. We have also worked to improve parent engagement related to the delivery of special ed services, which includes parent universities for parents of students with IEPs. We've created three citywide parent specialists who are themselves parents and can help address with special education needs of our parents and students. Diverse learning, the Diverse Learning Parent Advisory Council also provides an opportunity for discussion and input on policy and training and programming related to our diverse learners. The multi-tiered system of supports provides students with adequate and expanded interventions, and we continue to build on our relationship with the ISB-appointed monitor to ensure that we are compliant with state and federal rules. Standardizing best practices. This risk is one of the broadest categories, which impacts nearly every area in the district, and includes attendance, cash handling, ethics, information data handling, integrity and privacy, payroll, procurement, and workplace behavior, and applies to all schools across the district, including charters. Importantly, CPS cherishes the fact that more so than any other school district in the country, we are a school district that values principal autonomy and offers a variety of programming to schools tailored to each of the community's needs. The converse of this key quality is that we also need to clearly communicate critical policies, procedures, and training to all of our stakeholders to ensure that everyone operates in an appropriate manner. Key mitigating strategies for this risk include hosting an annual law conference for principals related to policies and procedures. A board policy working group is currently conducting a comprehensive review of all of our policies, and integrity memos have been developed and communicated to principals to make sure that those policies are clearly trained on and that principals are compliant to those policies and procedures. Regular network chief communications helps to disseminate some of these communications as well, and we have developed a parent, student, and employee handbook to help in disseminating information as well. Student safety and protection. A lot has been said about this risk over the past year, but the opportunity is so important and clear that it's in our core principles. Safe and supportive schools create an environment for successful learning. Importantly, this risk is also more broadly how we keep our children safe from a number of different factors, including other people, their environment, external event risks, and ensuring emergency preparedness procedures are in place. Key mitigating strategies for this risk include the development of the Plan for Protecting Chicago's Children, PCC, as well as the coordinated effort to conduct comprehensive background checks across the district. Efforts to, efforts also continue as it relates to reinforcing emergency preparedness procedures and training, and we continue to coordinate with other city agencies, including CPD, CHA, as well as continue to invest in the Safe Passage Program. Under talent, CPS strives to hire and retain talented and diverse educators amidst a national shortage and faces some challenges in certain hard-to-staff areas. To that end, we've implemented a number of key mitigating strategies, which include providing teacher residencies, especially for special ed bilingual and early childhood, as well as various teacher leadership initiatives. We've also created additional supports for teachers in our opportunity schools that are generally harder to staff. Under transparency and integrity, this last risk of transparency and integrity is probably the hardest to quantify, but one of the most important. The goal is to demonstrate integrity and transparency by strengthening our relationships with key stakeholders and build on the momentum that we have towards the broader engagement in the mission. CEO Jackson has prioritized this by starting her tenure with a series of town halls to engage in a meaningful dialogue around CPS. Integrity is also a key component to the vision, which highlights the importance of these values towards the mission. I mentioned the integrity memos, which are meant to communicate policies, procedures to all members of the district. We have implemented CPS's service, which is an essence service excellence training for all, and is required and mandatory for all employees, and helps to ensure that our services are being provided efficiently to our families and students. And we engage in a variety of methods of community dialogue, which include the ARA focus groups, parent advisory councils, bilingual advisory council, the Chicago Multilingual Parent Council, principal, teacher, and student advisory councils as well. We are working towards better data transparency, which includes the release of the Educational Facilities Master Plan, the Parents' Guide to the Budget, the Popular Annual Financial Report, as well as timely FOIA responses. As it relates to next steps, importantly, it's not enough for us to identify risks, but to take those risks that we've identified and ensure that we implement mitigating strategies to help reduce those risks. In order to act on this, we'll be embarking on phase two of the enterprise risk management process, which includes the continued expansion of the mitigating strategies discussed today. This will include identifying owners for certain risks and also developing performance indicators when these risks have been mitigated. Additionally, we've also begun the process of embedding the risk management assessment into our existing annual reviews and strategies internally. And finally, the risk assessment will also help to inform our internal audit plan, which will focus on areas with the highest level of risks. Before I conclude, I'd like to thank the entire internal audit team, as well as KPMG, who are here today, for the level of dedication and expertise they've lent to this process. In addition, I've also greatly appreciated the opportunity to be a part of this process. I've had the opportunity to hear firsthand from a lot of members across the district about all that they're doing to protect the mission. It's clear to me that the level of dedication and expertise from top to bottom is overwhelming, and we're making great progress towards our mission. I'm energized by the plans that we have in place, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jenny. Board members, questions?
I'd like to congratulate you for all of the work that has, you and your team, that has taken place to complete this and look forward to the next steps. I'm sure that this will enhance the services that Chicago Public Schools gives to its students and parents.
Great, thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, I just, this feels like a lot. I know we have a big system. It's very complex. There's a lot of moving parts to this. I think the part, as we move from the assessment to the management side of it, I think the, what's going to be important for us is to figure out how to prioritize these, how we're tackling these, how we're, like, creating benchmarks to make sure that we're actually improving on some of these things. And I know that that's something that Janice, you and the team are really focused on, but I think it's going to be important for the board and for the public now that we know what these are. And again, want to echo what my colleague said, you know, our warts are in here, you know, and areas that we know that we need to improve on. But I think the crux is going to be how we, as a system, prioritize these, start to tackle these, measure progress, and be transparent about that.
Yeah, and some of the work of quantifying and prioritizing has already started. But to your point, the real value of this is really taking it and into the next phase and acting on it. And so, you know, a lot of work also has been started, but we also want to make sure that we have a comprehensive strategy towards all of these risks and that it really will move the needle on reducing some of these risks.
A couple of questions. I completely concur with the remarks that our vice president just made. This is the most comprehensive look at the overall risk that CPS is facing. And I know that from Dr. Jackson's first day as CEO, she's looked at and wanted to get a good, comprehensive picture of what our issues are. You know, we struggled for the past two and a half years, anyway, with just financial risk. Other issues were there, but when you're trying to keep people paid and your bills paid, it's hard to look at other things. Our financial risks are substantially mitigated. They're not zero, but they're much improved. But this is an academic institution, and really, unless we're providing a high quality of education, frankly, we're not doing our job. But going back what Jaime just talked about, just for a moment, you already walked through some of the key risks. Again, this is just experience from the corporate world. It's hard to effectively mitigate more than a handful of risks. You need to know what they are across the board, and that one slide, excuse me, that one slide where you showed, I mean, it was really comprehensive. And all those things you have to be looking at, and you have to have mitigation strategies of what you do. But if you, maybe Dr. Jackson, I want to answer this, to look and say, the three top risks, not saying you're ignoring any of the others, that you're focusing then on, what would they be?
So the enrollment issue is one that clearly affects us in a lot of different areas. And, you know, I would say that as we have started the process of prioritizing these risks, one thing that we found in discussing all of these risks is that certain risks, if you help to resolve and mitigate those risks, will help improve some of the other risks. So there's a little bit of an 80/20 benefit there. Enrollment is clearly one of them. It affects our academic accomplishments. It affects our financial stability. It affects our ability to be equitable across the district. Standardizing best practices, that's also one in which I think also impacts a lot of other areas and one that we can and already have started taking the charge and helping to improve and create this continuum of policies, procedures, training, and compliance. The funding piece, I have to say this as the CFO, is one that's top priority, not just because of the work that I do, but also the fact that money is the root of all of the things that we can do and provides resources towards, driving us towards our mission. So those three are top of mind for me and also have a lot of impacts to other areas. You know, just to add to the question that both you and Vice President Guzman asked about, what's next? We do intend to take a multi-layered approach towards implementing mitigating strategies towards these risks. So there is the audit plan. There's also incorporating it in already existing work that we do around strategies and implementations we're taking, but, you know, helping, using this process to help create a more consolidated view of those strategies, as well as, you know, making sure that we look specifically at the risks identified here and perhaps create some, you know, working groups and action plans around that.
Anything you want to add, Dr. Jackson?
No, I agree with Jenny, and it's a hard question to answer because every single thing on this list is extremely important. I would agree with the three that she mentioned, but also just note that student protection is something that we're very much concerned about, as well as special education. And so while it's hard to prioritize all of these, I feel like we have a strong plan in place for protecting Chicago's students based on the things that we've put in place more recently. But again, it's, everything on the page is really important. And if I could just take a step back and just reiterate some of the things that I think came across in the presentation today, is how important this process was for me. I think, I think it's been clear that accountability is something that is important to me. I'm going to hold myself more accountable than any other person on this earth can possibly do. And I think in order to do that, you have to know the entire universe of potential risk that exists in a district. But what I hope people heard today is that they are numerous, they are interconnected, and they are complex. And so it's going to be incumbent upon us and important for us to make clear the progress that we're making on this, but to also make clear that we didn't get here in one year, and it's going to take a long time in order for us to dig ourselves out of some of these issues. But that, you know, I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the ability to have the opportunity to do that, and that's exactly what I plan to do.
One of the things that comes out of this, from at least a board perspective, is the transparency. There'll be comments made, perhaps even today, that we're not as transparent as we should be. The fact of the matter is, I think certainly under Dr. Jackson's leadership, she's opened them to the world what our issues are, and there are many. On the other hand, I want to go back to the financial, our financial position. You said something that, I don't know if people paid attention to, but I did. Tell us, tell me again, tell this audience, how much have you been able to save simply because we've been in a stronger financial position? And when we've gone out for debt, we've got a better interest rate, for all practical purposes, and you've also been able to retire high-interest debt for lower-interest debt. We still have to borrow money, but that's just a timing issue. Can you just, for a moment, what I'm asking you to do is to take credit for extraordinarily, extraordinarily.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, most importantly, it's the fact that the improved financial position, the overall framework for CPS's credit overall, the fact that we're not, you know, struggling year to year to make ends meet, has given us the ability to speak to outside rating agencies and other watchdog groups who review our credit. They have independently affirmed us as a better credit and financial, and in a better financial position. And the result of that is the markets have also listened, and our interest rates have become significantly lower. I haven't done a full tally of all of the interest rate savings, but I can say, for example, that the $455 million reduction in our, in our short-term borrowing last year, as well as the lower interest rates that we recently secured through competitive offering in the market has allowed us to save at least $70 million in interest savings alone on the short-term borrowing. Our long-term borrowing, which we also just sold last week, created significant savings, both from a refunding perspective, in essence, refinancing old, higher-interest-rate debt for lower debt, interest-rate debt, and as well as a lower debt service cost on new money bonds for capital projects. So overall, you know, it's a good outcome for the district, and importantly, it means that more of those dollars are going to the classroom.
Outstanding.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Jenny got an ovation. I love it. All right, one more presentation. My apologies, but we're consolidating a lot. Our final presentation will be from Mary Bradley, our Executive Director of Incubation and Innovation and Incubation. She will discuss the charter proposals today. As Mary will detail, following a thorough evaluation process, we have recommended that the board deny the three applications before them today for new charter schools and approve the charter revocation and non-renewal of two poor-performing charter schools. While we continue to believe that charter schools can and will serve as important opportunities for families to consider here in CPS, we do have an obligation to ensure that the schools provide students with a high-quality education and that new proposals demonstrate quality and meet an existing need and demand in the community that they are proposing to serve. I will now turn things over to Mary to walk us through today's proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good morning, President Clark, board members, Dr. Jackson, and Chief McDade. The board will be asked to vote, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, in the following actions. First will be the non-renewal and revocation recommendations for existing charter schools. And the second is new charter school proposals. Some of the key components of each of the processes is the non-renewal and revocation of low-performing charter schools. It's an annual process to identify, we use this to identify low-performing charters based on the charter school quality policy. Schools that are currently identified as low-performing are placed on a warning list, and if they are identified for a second time or in the final year of their contract, they may be recommended for revocation and closure. In our renewal process, we evaluate school contractual performance based on academic, financial, and operational performance, and we look at, do they meet the board's expectations set forth in the charter agreement? We also hold public hearings so that we can hear the public comment on recommendations. And any non-renewals or revocations by the Board of Education have an appeal right to the Charter School Commission. In request proposals, we release an annual RFP in accordance with law, and we follow the timelines that are listed in the statute. The Board of Education is required to take action, and a public hearing is held for The Board of Education is required to take action, and a public hearing is held for all proposals. Again, the charter proposal denials by the Board of Education have an appeal right with the Illinois Charter School Commission. Two of the main responsibilities of Innovation Incubation is to implement and conduct a thorough new school application review and provide ongoing oversight of current charter and contract schools. We ensure that they are in compliance with the board's expectations, and in the last year of the contractual term, we do a thorough review to ensure that they are meeting expectations. In an unfortunate event that a school does not meet the expectations set forth in the charter school agreement between the Board of Education and the charter organization, the charter school may be closed. I'm going to first cover the non-renewal and revocation of charter school agreements. The district placed Kwame Nakuma in Urban Prep West on the charter school academic warning list during the 2017-18 school year, according to the board's charter school quality policy. According to the policy, any charter school that does not meet criteria to be removed from the warning list and has not demonstrated significant improvement to be, through the implementation of remediation plan, will be recommended for closure. In addition to results, the district ensures that there are quality options for students. Schools are required to go through remediation process, which includes CPS monitoring of an improvement plan, complete and comprehensive school visits to understand the implementation plan, and a full review of academic programs and data. The first recommendation for revocation is Urban Prep West, who serves grades nine through 12, including 176 students. Urban Prep West did not meet the criteria and contractual conditions set forth to continue to operate, and therefore, we are recommending the closure of Urban Prep West. The next is Kwame Nakuma, who serves grades seven through, or, I'm sorry, kindergarten through eighth and 197 students. After a full review under the remediation process and a rigorous, complete review of the charter, under the charter renewal process, the school did not meet academic, financial, or operational expectations set forth in the charter school agreement, and we're recommending the closure of Kwame Nakuma. Most important, as I mentioned, we do look at a review and understanding, are there quality options for students in their neighborhood or in surrounding communities? Student transitions is one of the most important parts of this process to ensure that students are transitioned to a school that meets their needs and is of higher quality. First, we'll send letters upon the board's vote today to communicate to parents about the board's decision, upcoming informational meetings, and enrollment supports and options. We will be hosting an informational session for families this month to provide families with the next steps of student transitions and the educational options that they have available. The educational options for students will be provided to parents, and they are at higher-performing district-managed and charter schools. These options will include both schools with open seats, and schools that the district will guarantee a seat for, for each student through the enrollment process. We will also host monthly transition meetings for families and students through the months of January into the new school year. One-on-one meetings with families to discuss options, a higher-performing schools will take place, and student academic transitions and specific needs, including transportation and safety plans, will be included in this transition process. The next item I will cover is the request for proposals for new charter schools. The district implements the charter application review timeline according to national best practice. The district reviewed new school applications in accordance with the law, which includes setting up a process and meeting all required timelines. The district's process consists of three tiers of submissions and is clearly outlined on the CPS RFP website. Reviews of applicants are completed by a cross-functional team at CPS, and we review the proposed curriculum, educational plan, the ability to meet the need of special populations, finance, facilities, and operations, and importantly, community engagement and support, and the need that exists in the community. In addition to reviewing the application, the district holds a capacity interview with each applicant to further understand the application's submission and the capacity of the applicant to implement what is in the proposal. Three applicants have proposed to open three charter schools in the fall of 19, with five new school proposals being withdrawn during the process. The first applicant, Intrinsic Schools, recommending a denial. They're proposing to open in 2019, serving grades nine through 12 in the Near North and Loop community. Project Simeon, proposing to open Kemet Leadership Charter School in 2019, serving grades five through eight at-risk population, we are recommending denial. We also recommend denial of Moving Everest Charter School. This will be their second campus in 2009, or 19 would be the proposed opening, serving K through five. A brief summary of each of the proposals. Intrinsic Two has proposed opening a citywide high school in the Loop that would open next school year. While Intrinsic does meet the charter school quality policy criteria for replication, the operator has not been able to identify a location that meets the identified needs of the district's annual regional analysis. Kemet Leadership Academy.
Can I stop you?
Yes.
Say what that means.
Yes. So the district had launched, and it was mentioned earlier in Dr. Jackson's comments, we looked at the annual regional analysis, it includes data, and it looks at capacity, quality, programmatic need across the district in different regions. At this moment, Intrinsic has proposed to open in the Loop, which does not, it does not align with the needs identified in the annual regional analysis and other data that we reviewed. So this would not align with the district's current strategy to get community feedback, to really understand what the, what it is moving forward for each neighborhood and community.
And where are our needs?
On the south and west.
Yeah.
The quality needs mainly on the south and the west side of Chicago.
Thank you.
Kemet Leadership Academy Charter School has proposed creating a charter school in the greater Inglewood community that would serve at-risk boys in grades five through eight. After a thorough review of this proposal, it was determined that the proposal did not include a complete and proven curriculum. The applicant has not developed a clear instructional approach, there's a lack of demonstrated leadership capacity, and the school's proposed budget and facility are not viable. The third and final proposal, Moving Everest Two, has proposed create a traditional K8 in the Austin community beginning in 2019. One of the main drivers of the recommendation is that this proposal and this operator does not currently meet the district's criteria for replication. This concludes the presentation, and I will open up for any questions that you have.
Board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Clark. This concludes my CEO's report.
Okay, I have an announcement to make, same announcement I make at every board meeting. I encourage everyone to use our website, and our website is cpsboe.org. It's an excellent way to encourage folks in between board meetings to reach out to the Board of Education. You could arrange to have meetings with us, which we will do, or issues that you are obviously concerned about can be resolved in short order, or at least short order in between board meetings. We're still committed to a 48-hour turnaround on these requests that come in through the website, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Okay, I encourage you to use it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with the details for our next board meeting.
You didn't give me a chance to ask you. But go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. President, the next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 23, 2019, at the CPS Loop Office. Due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, advanced registration will open at 10:30 a.m. Friday, January 18, 2019, and close on Tuesday, January 22, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Okay, let's now proceed with today's public participation section. Madam Secretary, please share the rules of public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with our board staff member. Adrian will assist us today. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience. I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for the speakers to see. When there are 30 seconds remaining, the color will turn to yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you could kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before you begin, and, and, it sounded interesting.
It was me, I apologize.
At the, the last participant, it should be Asha, who had substituted at the last board meeting, and I have, as I have been reminded multiple times, I did not give her an opportunity to share her comments, so I want to make sure we do it this time.
We will, we will make sure we do that this month, Mr. President. Thank you for reminding us. Mr. President, before we do begin with the speakers list, we do have some elected officials with us this morning, and I'd like to call them first, please. We will start by calling Luis Arroyo, the third district super, I'm sorry, the third district state representative, followed by Alderman Garza from the 10th Ward, and then we also have Jesse Sharkey, the CTU president, with us today.
Thank you, President Clark, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. I am here on an issue, private issue, that I have in my district, and I think it's a time to hear me about what my constituents are talking about. I know that there was some issues with the TAF feeder school that's in my district, or a binding district. So I'm here today to ask you, what do I have to do to be able to expand, to expand the boundary so they could go into my district? The people in my district are complaining that they're being kept out, they're not being able to come from across the street. I would like that to be expanded. I appreciate what CPS has done. I'm pro CPS, pro CTU, and I'm here to support, but I need your support, because my constituents are complaining that they're being kept out from that neighborhood school. I know that there were some negotiations with the Alderman, I know there was negotiations. I wasn't privy to that, negotiations, to those agreements, but I come in front of you now, I think it's, it's important to come in front of you now to represent my district. My district has called and called, I've had hundreds of calls, because we are not being represented, and I'm here in front of you today to ask you, how can we do to expand the boundary south to my district?
Chief McDade, any response?
So the students have preference boundaries already, so this was voted on last month. This came before the board last month, President Clark, regarding the TAF Freshman Academy, and for the three schools that are being referenced here, they have been awarded a preference boundary to be able to access the school, and we do have many of the, some of the students have applied and go CPS for the new TAF Freshman Academy.
Could you explain to me, if you don't mind, what that means, a preference?
So, so meaning that when you state that they've been shut out as if they are not able to access the school, that's actually not the case. What will happen is they apply, and there is the zone boundary for TAF, that, that's the boundary where, you know, students who automatically, you know, are zoned to that school, but then you have a preference boundary where these, the students that you're speaking of would have preference over other students that are applying that are not within the boundary. So, and with the number of seats there, they have a strong probability of being able to access that school, so they do have a preference, and they have not been completely shut out.
I want to thank you for that. I was misguided about the preference. They told me they didn't have access, they told me they didn't have preference, so that's why I came here this morning. I think there was a good meeting, for my first meeting here today, to get good news, because somebody steered me down the wrong path. I could have been somewhere else instead of being here this morning. But also, I heard, I heard the presentation, it turned off a little bit, President Clark, nice to see you, I haven't seen you in a while. I usually lead you downstate also, but, good job. But I heard the presentation that the school, the CFO was talking about, so she was saying that CPS is in good standing, and you're not going to need no money from Springfield this year.
No, no, she did not say that. No, she didn't say that.
So was I miss?
Completely.
Yes.
You don't want to go away with that. And we're happy to sit down with you and bring all of our people to make sure that you don't have that understanding.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me go first in front of my colleague, Ms. Garza, which I don't know what she's going to talk about. She's going to make a lot more sense than I did. I think I got stirred down the wrong path, but thank you, thank you very much. Have a nice Christmas and a New Year's, and I'll go back to my district and tell them, somebody's lying to somebody.
Well, I think it's a misunderstanding and the timing of decisions we made, and there still may be some misunderstanding. Chief McDade will make sure that she gave you the accurate information, obviously. If you have constituents that are still confused, we need to get in front of them and make sure they understand.
If I could get that to my office, I would really appreciate to tell my district, you know, this is what it is. So I'm, I'm just asking for the support. Thank you once again. Have a Merry Christmas and a New Year's, thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
And remember, we still need money.
Thank you, and our next speaker, please, Alderman Garza from the 10th Ward.
Hi, good evening. It's, it's good, I actually, I wish I didn't have to come back to, like I do, because, but Janice, I do have, Dr. Jackson, I apologize, you're right, you, it's, this has been going on for way longer than a year. So I will give you that, and you're working hard to try to, try to correct things, but the 48-hour turnaround time, I'm still waiting on the answer from my email from last week, so, not happening, President Clark. I always come here with one thing on my mind, and then I veer off because of all the presentations. So I do have to say, my diverse learners in my district, in my school, in my ward, are not getting their special ed minutes, and I'd be happy to set up a team working with whoever I need to work with to make sure that that happens, because they are not getting their minutes. Well, you guys said that you have a small budget that you're working with for under-enrolled schools. How much is that small budget?
$15 million was given to schools this year already in small schools. It was a part of the budget.
We should have a little, small budget for schools that are overcrowded, so that we can alleviate that overcrowding. And as you guys can see outside today, and one of the reasons that I'm here is because of the overcrowding at my schools. I just do have another question as well for the guys from Followed Aspen, or maybe some of you guys can speak to this. Where is the money coming from to pay the stipends for the teacher, these people that you're training?
The CPS operating budget.
Okay, because they, I, I was a counselor, not a math teacher, so forgive me, but it comes out to $1,560,000?
Yeah.
That's 31 teachers at $50,000 a year.
It's paid to teachers. Teachers and counselors are the ones that are the change champions. Administrators don't receive the stipend. So these are teachers who we elected to pay a stipend as opposed to paying $1.5 million to an outside consulting firm to come in and train. So it's actually going directly in the pockets of CTU members.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you for answering that question. So, President Clark, you said you guys are doing a great job about financial risk, and we're saving like $70 million on the short-term bonds or whatever, but our goal is high-quality education, right? That's always been our goal. That's always been our goal for me as an educator for 22 years. But when you have, at our school, in my ward, Grissom School, as well as Washington Elementary, but I'm just going to focus on Grissom today, which has been an ongoing issue for four years, I brought this to Forrest Claypool, he, that, that's when he told me he didn't believe me, we're still at the issue of severe overcrowding there. I just want to read you some of the numbers, okay? Our eighth grade has 42 students. Our seventh grade has 40 students. Our sixth grade has 36. Our fifth grade has 41. Our fourth grade has 32. Our second grade has 36, and our first grade has 30. We only have one each of those classrooms there, and it's, it's not conducive to a high-quality education. It's just not, and this is And this has been ongoing. I've been talking about this since Claypool was here, when he told me I wasn't, he actually called me a liar. So this is not getting any better. We have to do something to alleviate, because as you can see by these numbers, in, you know, in the lower grades, they're not going to be alleviated. So I don't know if there's like a graveyard for like leftover trailers or something, or if we can rent a space somewhere to alleviate this. I just want to, these are letters that I got from kids. We had a parent meeting last week to deal with this, and we had about 90 parents show up, so this is from a kid. I had, I've had to deal with huge classrooms for all my years here, and for all my life. Oh, believe me when I tell you how it makes me feel. But for me personally, it's the hallway. There are so many kids in the hall that people are tripping over legs and books. I'm trying to get into a good high school, and this is not helping. Another kid says, "Class size here, class size affects our learning much more than you think. There are over 40 kids in my class, and the halls, in the halls, I feel caved in with all these people trying to get to their lockers, switch classes, go to the bathroom, et cetera." If you read this, please, please help. These class sizes are atrocious. It's been amazing how nobody has ever cared, except for teachers and parents, to do something about 45 kids in a classroom in a 50-foot cubicle. I believe that these class sizes are over fire code, because when you put the teacher and some, I know Dr. Sweeney's been working really hard to give these teachers an aide full-time, but that's over fire code, and that's like a federal mandate. We have one way in and one way out of that classroom. God forbid if something like that would ever happen for these kids to get out of there. I asked in an email to Arnie Rivera and Janice and some other people, and I know Arnie gave me an answer on the way out, I would really, I'm asking for the Capitol team to come out and measure the classrooms, give us some suggestions. We're willing to work with you guys on whatever we have to do, but we got to have some changes there. These kids deserve better, exactly what you said. I just have Yvette Hernandez with me. She's a mom who's been up all night, because she works at night, so she could be at home during the day with her kids, and her kid is in one of these classrooms, so I'm going to step away and let her speak.
Mr. President, would you permit that?
How?
She is a registered speaker.
Oh, she is?
She is, but she's like number 37, and the woman hasn't slept all night because she's working, so.
Go ahead.
And I'll reserve my right to say anything after her.
Okay. My name is Yvette Hernandez, that my son goes to on Grissom School. Last year, he was in a kindergarten. It was an issue going on where I actually volunteered to go to the classroom and stay with my son, because he was a very little, you know, like, active kid, like all kindergartens are. As I sat there, and I was observing, the teacher couldn't handle 30 kids in one class. Teacher Ed was not there. It was just the teacher and myself there, and the teacher had to leave like for a meeting, and I was left there with 30 kids, like not educated. Kids was just jumping around, and for one kid, for two or three kids that need attention, they weren't getting like the attention, because there's other kids running around and stuff like that. Grissom Elementary School got very, very good, great teachers. Dr. Sweeney, I really like him, because he's very positive, like very motivated for the kids. The teachers are very good in teaching the kid, but some kids, they don't get, like, some parents complain about, like, my kid can't do like the Homer, and they don't understand like the Homer, because there are families that are moving in the neighborhood with kids. I have, I already have three new neighbors with family, like with kids, three kids, four kids, two kids, and the school is so small, the school needs to get extended. As now this year, I've been involved in the LSC, and I see--
Ms. Hernandez, I'm sorry, thank you for your comments.
Okay, well, one more thing. I see kids, kids like with the teacher in the hallway with education, like teaching their kids in the hallway.
Thank you very much. Chief McDavid, I don't know if you heard all of this, the numbers that were, that the Alderman represented, and I have no reason to dispute her statements, eighth grade, 42 students, seventh grade, 40, sixth grade, 36, fifth grade, 41, fourth grade, 32, second grade, 36, first grade, 30. I assume that you are aware of the situation in Grissom. I'm not asking for a response at this moment, but this is something, obviously, that we would be concerned about.
It is, and President Clark, I do want to have our COO respond to this. This is something that, you know, we have talked about.
Use your teacher voice. Thank you.
No, you know, Alderman is correct, you know, accurate in saying that, at a one classroom per grade, the class sizes at the school. What we're doing right now is, you know, twofold. One, we're doing a demographic analysis to make sure that whatever Capitol decision needs to be made is informed based off of what we've seen historically and what we anticipate. And as I committed to the Alderman, we will be sending out a Capitol team out there in coordination with her schedule, so that she can be there with us to make sure that we both have the demographic analysis completed, but also do an assessment of the facility to figure out what our next steps are.
Two things very quickly. One, one of the comments the Alderman made that obviously have a great concern, I cannot, I assume, we really don't have any classrooms that exceed the fire code.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. 40 kids in a classroom is exceeding the fire code. If you come and--
No, I'm not arguing with you.
Okay, thank God.
I'm making a different statement. Joe, is there a waiver for classrooms? Can we exceed?
No.
I know the answer. I just wanted you to hear it.
No, I know it.
Go ahead.
No, there's not.
Okay, so we can't do that. We're doing that if.
You are doing it.
Alderman, I'm not arguing with you. I'm really trying to make a, reinforce your point. Maybe I do it in a fashion that's not as clear as you'd like it to be, but--
That was very clear. It's overcrowded, it's over fire code, bottom line.
In any event, that's not a situation that we could tolerate, and you're going to fix it. Alderman, thank you for your time, and thank you for your clarity.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll proceed with the next speaker, please. Jesse Sharkey from the CTU.
Thank you, President's Board, CEO Jackson. The district has spent the last 20 years building up a quote-unquote "portfolio of schools." It's been a deliberate policy of choice. A big part of that choice has been charter schools. At the time where this policy was first being formulated, myself and others in the CTU complained about it, and yet you, and we complained particularly about the idea of building new schools of choice in an era in which other schools were being closed. And we've now seen there's a couple hundred new schools have been added at the same time that a couple hundred schools have been closed over the period that spans my entire teaching career. You conceived it, you championed it, the district approves new charter operators, the district funds charter operators, and now, and new charters, and now I guess we hear is closing charter operators as well. I've never thought that closing schools at all is a great way to provide leadership and education, but that's for a different conversation. This year, charter's got a good chunk of additional funding, $37 million, I believe, over and above the half-billion or so dollars of student-based budget funds, which themselves increased. Now, you're likely aware that teachers and staff at the Acero Charter School Network are on strike for a contract. The latest audit of Acero shows that they have $10 million of additional revenue year over year, and yet classroom spending at that network has decreased by a million dollars or 6% of their budget. So in other words, CPS is handing over piles of cash, and less of it is going into the classroom. Who's accountable for that? How do you, the Chicago Board of Education, see your accountability and your responsibility when an outsourced charter winds up in a strike? Acero Charter Network chooses to pay their CEO, Rich Rodriguez, a salary that is higher than CEO Jackson's. She manages over 500 schools. He manages 15. Other charter operators subcontract school management to companies that in turn subcontract with other operators, and the CTU then negotiates with a subcontractor that is in turn a subcontractor of an operator that CPS has subcontracted to in order to manage schools. I humbly assert that you guys need to come to terms with the fact that you've sowed the wind and reaped the whirlwind. This is an industry that's out of control, and the first strike in the history of the charter industry should be a wake-up call about that. CTU plans to submit legislation that's designed to ensure that a certain minimum of education dollars wind up in direct classroom instruction. We invite the CPS and CBOE to join us to support that legislation. We'd also invite any input that you could make or pressure that you could put on the Acero Charter School Network to sign a fair contract. Like I said, we believe that network is, we know that network is stockpiling cash. There's over $24 million in cash reserves in that network, at the same time that we've seen a reduction to the resources that are going to the classrooms, and that's provoked the first strike. We'd like to end that strike, but we're determined that we'll stay on strike there until we get a fair contract and fair treatment for the people who work in the schools and the students and parents that depend on that for their educational future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey.
Thank you very much, Jesse.
Mr. President, we are now ready to continue with the speakers list. I will start by calling Speaker number one, please, Erica Clark. We will then have Speaker number two, Brendan Daly, and then we'll continue with the group from Ogden. Mr. President, there are various speakers, and we'll call Speaker number 18, Sarah Conley.
Hold on before you start. You know, Jesse, I was so taken by your quote, I actually looked it up, and I guess it's the sound of the Old Testament. Yeah, it took me a minute to catch up with it. I kind of heard it, but I couldn't remember it. I thought it was pretty profound, but I wanted to know where you got it from. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just call this group so that they could get lined up correctly, please. So the group from Ogden is Speaker number 18, Sarah Conley, followed by Speaker 22, Andreas Flores. We then have Speaker 29, Dina Tavaro, followed by 34, Conlon O'Brien. Then we have Speaker 37, Mackenzie Tavaro, followed by 50, Nagazi Okafor. And then we have Rebecca Wells, Speaker number three. Speaker 39, Sarah Anderson. Laura Britton, Speaker 27. And then David Hunley, Speaker 55. And then after that group, it'll be Speaker number five, Marion Bimani. Ms. Clark, can you please proceed?
Yes, good morning. Erica Clark with Parents for Teachers. I'm here also to talk about class size issues, and I'm really glad to hear that you're going to address the problems at Grissom, but the problems at Grissom should not be a surprise to you. Like Alderman Garza said, she's been coming year after year to talk about it. Last year, I came to you and I presented an analysis that showed huge problems with overcrowding in the district. Forty classes, excuse me, 18 classes last year had over 40 students in them. Grissom was one of those schools, and those problems continue year after year. And while it's good you're going to address this school or that school, we need a systemic solution to this problem. Parents shouldn't have to have their aldermen come in, or they shouldn't have to take time off from work to come in month after month and beg you to relieve overcrowding with 40 kids in a class. That's not a condition that children can learn in. And I would just ask you all, would you accept 30 or 40 kids in your child's class, in your grade school child's class? Of course not. You'd be up in arms, and you'd be demanding that their school district do something about it. And that's what the parents are demanding here. They want a systemic solution to this problem. And I'd like to ask you, why is this a surprise to you? Because you have enrollment data that you collect on the 15th day of school. Now, we asked, we FOIA'd that data, we FOIA'd class size data from you over a month ago. We still haven't gotten it. We want to see the class sizes in every school and every district. And again, why is that not something you're looking at? Why are you depending on parent volunteers, parent groups, teachers, aldermen, parents to come in and do your job for you? You should be looking at that data as soon as you get it, figuring out which classes have problems, and taking immediate action to fix that. So I'd like to hear an answer to those questions. I didn't get an answer from you last year. Could I get an answer this year?
Thank you very much.
An answer?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Our next speaker, please. Speaker two, Brendan Daly.
Good morning. I'm Brendan Daly, the Chair of the LSC at Leonard Regional Gifted Center, and unfortunately, I'm not quoting scripture today, President Clark, but good morning, President Clark, members of the board.
I'm still going to pay attention.
Thank you. CEO Jackson, when I was last before you, last school year, I came with evidence and information about the severe leaking that was occurring from our roof. Every time it rained, water would come into the building. Interior plumbing was affected. I'm happy to report that now, when it rains outside of the building, it's no longer raining inside of the building. We received a roof repair, parapet walls were fixed, internal plumbing, electrical plaster painting, and exterior lighting was all done over the summer. So I'm here really just to thank you for that. I want to in particular thank Board Member Ward, who met with me and came out to the school. I want to thank, and forgive me if I get his name wrong, but Dave Grusard, who is the CPS project manager on this. CPS facility staff. Also want to thank Alderman Brookins, who's the local Alderman, FH Passion, who oversaw the work, and Fox and Fox Architects, who essentially wrote up the plans and ensured that the integrity of the architecture was not compromised. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much. You listened to us, you heard us, and you were able to prioritize us in the goals that CFO outlined, I think it was safe, warm, and dry. We're definitely dry now, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly.
You can talk a little longer. Go ahead.
Keep going.
And our next speaker, please. Speaker number 18, Sarah Conley, please.
Sarah Conley, I have been an Ogden parent for the past 12 years and currently have a sixth grader at the Jenner Campus. Let me just take a minute. So I want you to imagine a school community we all aspire to create or to be a part of. What does it look like? What is it really? It is a passionate leadership and staff. We're working together to achieve their goals, goals that benefit the children that are fully committed to serve. It has parents fully involved in supporting the staff and leadership to achieve these goals, goals that benefit all the children of the school. That's a school community we would all want to be a part of and to be proud to serve, and that's the community we have in the merged Ogden-Jenner School. Not everyone thinks the merger is good. The vast majority of the parents supported it for over three years through numerous challenges to achieve the goal of educational equity and expanded campus that is even more diverse than before. Now imagine the system which supports this school. Imagine the organization tasked with supporting the community from an administrative standpoint. Are they concerned with what really matters? Do they have the leadership to achieve their goals? Do they have the resources necessary to support children? And do they have the parental support? Now I want you to imagine, this organization is charged with supporting the school community and does the exact opposite of what it's promised. Without conferring with anyone in the community, the local school councils, the staff, or parents, CPS removes Principal Byer, a move opposed by the majority of the community. I've submitted a petition that shows over or nearly 1,000 supporters of Dr. Byer. It is at odds with everything the Ogden-Jenner community stands for and what we have worked hard to achieve these past three years, a diverse, high-performing community. That is to the parents and community members dedicated to our children's success, an effort to derail our momentum. We are expecting the support we were promised as part of the merger. The success of the merger has been put at risk with Dr. Byer's reassignment. The morale of the staff and student is at all-time low. We, as parents, feel like CPS has pulled the rug out from under us.
Ms. Conley? Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 22, Andreas Flores.
Hi, my name's Andreas Flores, and I'm a sixth-grade student from the Ogden-Jenner Campus. This is my ninth year at Ogden, and in those nine years, I've had a lot of principals. Out of-- Out of those, Dr. Byer was the most student-involved principal who participated in many events with us. For example, he ran a 5K run in an owl suit in 75 degrees to show Ogden pride. He was a huge part in making the merger happen. My mother always came home and said how hard Dr. Byer is working to make what my school is today. There were so many meetings and gatherings to make this merger happen. People were working very hard with Dr. Byer because they believed it was best for our community. Next, Dr. Byer cared about our attendance a lot, and at East Campus, he would have dance parties to encourage students to be at school every day that week. At our school now, they gave out certificates to students with perfect attendance for the quarter. Personally, I love when they give out these awards and do things like dance parties because they make students feel good about themselves and have something in common with their peers. Lastly, having a stable student body is very important to a successful school. As in anything, having people happy means that there is more work being done and therefore a more productive environment. Not having Dr. Byer has been a real heartbreaker to all the students because he was like the glue that held the Jenner and Ogden community together. Dr. Byer is very important to us students on a personal level and as a community member. Bringing Dr. Byer back means keeping our community together.
What's your name?
Andreas Flores.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 29, please, Dina Tavero.
Hello, my name is Dina Tavero, and I'm a parent of an Ogden seventh grader. Thank you for spending time with us and listening to us. I'm here today to ask for Dr. Byer's reinstatement. His removal has been a disruption. Dr. Byer came as our principal three years ago and has resolved so many other issues. We had principal instability. We had scandal with a predator teacher. His latest endeavor was to merge two communities together. Dr. Byer's leadership built the trust and support of not only the stakeholders, but also the community. Since Dr. Byer's reassignment, parents don't believe that this school has the leadership it needs to succeed. It's difficult enough to be a principal with the limited resources, let alone to merge schools. Dr. Byer has not just been a principal, he's been a vested member of our community. His removal undermines the trust built in our community implementing this merger. No one feels good about where we are. Our climate and culture has changed, and it isn't stable anymore, and the morale is down. Morale is down, education for our kids is compromised. Parents are planning to leave CPS, and as a product of CPS, myself, I am conflicted as well. Kids aren't happy, and things are out of control. Teachers are looking for new opportunities. Principals need to feel supported. Most importantly, CPS lost the trust of parents who believe in a public school system. Parents and our kids want Dr. Byer reinstated. Please help us gain back confidence in the system that serves us and our kids. Please look into the OIG report that's flawed, and if you did read it, it's hard to wonder why his ultimate fate is to be dismissed.
Ms. Tavero, thank you. Our next speaker then will be Speaker 34, Colin O'Brien, please.
Good afternoon, President Clark, Dr. Jackson, Chief McDade, and the board. I'm a father of a third and a seventh grader and a proud CPS parent for the past eight years. Earlier, Chief McDade stated diversity of our district is our greatest asset, and I agree. In the past three years, the Jenner-Ogden communities worked together to complete the merger of their schools. As a result, the Ogden International School might be one of the most diverse schools, both ethnically and economically, in Illinois, if not the country. The merger is something CPS and Chicago should be proud of. I know I am. The primary drivers of this merger were the late Robert Crosston and Dr. Michael Byer. Without Dr. Byer's hard work, patience, and vision, the merger would not have occurred. Last month, Dr. Byer was suspended, and currently, the Ogden School is a ship without an experienced captain. To ensure the first year of the merger's success, I would call on the board to reinstate Dr. Byer while the charges against him are dealt with procedurally. I believe Dr. Byer will be ultimately exonerated, but if it is determined that he can no longer lead Ogden, let that decision be made in June. This will lessen the disruption to the Ogden students and will allow CPS and the Ogden LLC the opportunity to carefully choose a new leader for the 2019-2020 year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. And the next speaker for the group, please. Speaker 37, Mackenzie Tavero.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Tavero. I'm here today because I'm most concerned with the school and the person who has successfully led us, Dr. Byer. I am only in seventh grade and have had seven principals. That isn't normal. I know those on the Board of Education are really smart and keep us students in mind, but this time, I'm not so sure. Did anyone think how it would change the flow of our school? His removal became my distraction along with many other students. Our education is what matters, and now with Dr. Byer gone, things are way more complicated. You would see Dr. Byer busy running from campus to campus, but always came to our events, stopped in to check on in the classrooms, or stood in the hallways to see how things were. He was tough, but kids liked him. Now everything seems so out of control and chaotic without him. Dr. Byer cared and made schools safe. I was bullied in sixth grade, and he helped me grow from that experience. He has been the glue that held our school together, and now the glue is gone. He demonstrated he was a leader, not just by managing the merger, but over 1,600 kids, teachers, and buildings, and three buildings. Without Dr. Byer, our school doesn't feel the same. Our teachers are working hard, and we are learning, but this school feels pretty empty without him and how he has led us to be better people. Our ship is sinking, and the captain is gone. Bring him back and help us stay afloat as we were once before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tavero. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 50, N'Gazi Okofor.
Thank you. It's actually pronounced N'Gazi Okorofor. It's a hard one.
Thank you.
That's okay. As stated, my name is N'Gazi Okorofor. I am a parent of a kindergartner, and I have a pretty unique perspective in comparison to these wonderful concerned parents and students in that I'm brand-new to the Ogden community. I was looking forward to this time, bringing my child to kindergarten first day ever of school, and I was embraced by the Ogden community, specifically Dr. Byer, Head of School, Cara Krantz, and the rest of the administration and teachers. As an African-American woman with an African-American son, I had choices in terms of schools I could attend, and I specifically chose Ogden because of its history of embracing diversity and because of the merger. So when we received news in early November that the principal, who had overseen this merger, who was uniquely qualified to oversee this merger, was reassigned, it really took my breath away. And I haven't recovered since, and nor has the community, the Ogden community. Earlier in the CEO's presentation, Dr. Jackson's presentation, the words fairness, equity, accountability, transparency, and integrity were mentioned. These are traits that I hold dear in my life professionally and personally, and I know Dr. Jackson and her team and the board, Chairman Clark, hold dear as well. And I'm not certain these words are being utilized when it comes to Principal Byer. I ask respectfully that this administration rethink and reconsider its action that it's taken with Dr. Byer, and consider what you're hearing from students, teachers, and parents, how much this man means to this community, so that this merger, the merger, can be successful.
Ms. Okofor?
So much is resting on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please. Speaker three, Rebecca Wells.
My name is Rebecca Wells. I have a sixth grader at Ogden, and standing next to me today is Giselle Jackson. She's a first-grade teacher and a current LSC member at our school. She was unable to get a speaking slot, so I am presenting some materials for her. On November 13, 2018, our LSC submitted a resolution regarding the hasty removal of our principal, Dr. Michael Byer. It was presented to Chairman Clark, Dr. Janice Jackson, Mayor Emanuel, and four of our aldermen. I would like to read some excerpts from that. The local school council by law plays a role in decision-making at the local school level, one area in particular being the evaluation and selection of the school's principal. On August 7, 2018, our local school council, pursuant to its legal authority, had moved to renew Principal Byer's contract effective 2019 for four additional school years. Dr. Byer has compiled a significant record of accomplishment in the school's status during his three-year tenure as principal of Ogden. A recent merger of formerly two separate school communities, Ogden and Jenner, has recently been finalized and is underway for its first year in 2018-19. The merger necessitates the continued and stable leadership of Dr. Michael Byer. Dr. Byer maintains not only the deep historical context, but also a sincere and authentic understanding of the needs of the collective community now being served. His stewardship and vision has been pivotal in ensuring the success. So what they are asking for is that this local school council opposes the removal of Dr. Byer. The local school council, on behalf of the Ogden School, requests that Dr. Byer is immediately reinstated, and the Chicago Public Schools should execute the contract that was unanimously approved by this local school council in August of 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. And the next speaker for the group is 39, please, Sarah Anderson.
Be the solution. That is a phrase and an adage that is employed at our school and has been for the last two years. It was introduced by our principals, including Dr. Byer. It's a motto when you walk down our hallways, you can look on the bulletin boards, you can see, be the solution. When you listen to our announcements, be the solution. I am very glad to be here today to see that you are striving to be the solution on a number of fronts. Unfortunately, with all due respect, you have failed the school my children have attended for the last six years. We have had seven principals in six years. It's unconscionable. I would ask you to reconsider the decisions you are making and the effects that it has when you take out a principal after a principal after a principal and introduce new initiatives that are sensitive and important. We are a model for our community and for our nation. You have a mission. I would recommend that you put your mission on some board in this room to remind you who you serve and why you are here and who you are speaking and representing today. When we think about the next years of our collective efforts to bring Chicago to the forefront in education, I hope we can do that at Ogden School and at all of our Chicago schools.
Ms. Anderson?
By seeing that our own efforts are because of the Board of Education and CPS and not in spite of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker, please. Laura Britton, Speaker 27.
Dr. Jackson, President Clark, Chief McDade, board members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. You've heard so eloquently expressed the importance of the merger and the impact on our school community of what is happening. So I would like to speak directly to the nitty-gritty of the process thus far. The letter from Network Chief Jocelyn that we all received said that the basis for Dr. Byer's reassignment was the investigation and the report done by Investigator Schuler. Well, it was a grave mistake to damage Ogden and to potentially tank Dr. Byer's career based on that investigation and that report. The investigation was incomplete. The parents who were likely included were not contacted. They were not interviewed by the inspector to find out if, in fact, it was a scheme with the parents or not. I have letters I have provided to all of you. There are a number of documents in that package. Some of the letters include email chains. One includes an email chain where a parent was told flat-out that absences for travel were unexcused, with no exceptions. There is a letter from a parent who contacted CPS and was told that she should homeschool and then re-enroll her child for a lengthy absence for travel. There are letters from parents who made their decisions about whether to un-enroll and re-enroll their children based on information from other parents. There are letters from parents who told Ogden administrators about lengthy absences and were never told that they should enroll or un-enroll. The report is biased and conclusory. It acknowledges the policy was unclear. It acknowledges that parents make their own decisions. It cherry-picks brief quotes without context, and those quotes don't say what the report says that they say. Many of us in this room are current or former teachers. I've been a law professor and a college professor for almost 15 years now.
Ms. Britton?
If I could just finish my sentence. If a student turned in to me a document that was as biased and incomplete as this report, I would give them an F. If CPS and the Board of Investigation chooses to rely on such a document, I think that that is something to note. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 55, David Hudley.
President Clark, CEO Jackson, Chief McDade, thank you for this time. I am the parent of an Ogden student, and this is my eighth academic year. Clearly, the unjust and disproportionate action towards Dr. Byer has inspired a lot of reaction. But for me personally, it has allowed me to take a look at something that has been bothering me for quite some time as a CPS parent, and that is the fixation with the 95 or now 96% As parents, we are inundated with messages from our school about attendance, and frankly, the number of those messages way, far outweigh messages about reading with your child, about supporting homework, about getting good sleep. And so you really need to ask yourself why it is we're so fixated on this issue, which is the heart, supposedly, if we take the idea pretext away, the heart of why Dr. Byer was removed from the school. So I want to ask you, does it support the board's initiatives for my son to be told not to go to after-school math club because his attendance is under 95%? And for that matter, does it support students who aren't allowed to do athletics at that level, 95%? Should there be incentives for kids to be in school? Absolutely. Is there a relationship between kids being in school and having a good education? Absolutely. But we need to really look and see why we're focusing so much on that number. And to that regard, as it relates to Ogden, I ask you this. While my child should be in school as much as he possibly can, is my school's quality based upon whether or not there are other members, other families in my school who have to have extended absences? There are legitimate reasons why, in an international community, families have their kids out of school for a long period of time. And if that reduces my school's percentage to under 95%, does that mean that my son's school is a lower quality? According to the--
Mr. Hudley, can you please conclude?
According to the quality assessment for schools, it's 20% of what makes my school a good-quality school. So let's look at these policies and find out whether or not they're really supporting the education of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the next speaker then is Speaker number five, Marion Bimani.
I'm prepared, the next speaker, is this on the same issue?
I think she has a different perspective on Ogden. And then, if I may, Mr. President, call a couple of other speakers so that we line them up. I'll call Speaker number four, Andrew Broi, followed by the designated speakers for CICS, Speaker 31, Michael Nash, and Speaker 45, Jessica Byrd. Thank you. Can you please proceed?
Sure. Good afternoon. I am a CPS parent, and as an educator, I work with over 100 school districts and superintendents across the country. Time is short, so forgive my quick pace. I have a strong belief that we can provide functioning local schools. Schools should be the stewards of our communities. Starting with a concern about students, another CPS parent recently shared, quote, "The teacher informed me that a kid in the class told my son to 'go back to China.'" This mom was horrified at this racist comment and notes that no one should say things like this. She also wants to know, has anyone ever experienced this at Ogden? Yes. Last spring, Ogden engaged in a diversity study with outside consultants. Many kids experienced what this mom describes. Ogden removed the possibility of any inclusive or transparent-- Ogden removed the possibility of any inclusive or transparent problem-solving process for students and teachers as they sought to bury the study. I, in fact, was dared to FOIA for it. In this study, other compliance and equity questions also surfaced. Are principals able to hold graduating seniors' transcripts for any reason, thereby preventing them from attending college the following fall? Are principals able to require families to work off their student fee debt? Questions about the local school council also surfaced. Are principals able to select an LSC slate and work towards their election? Is an individual LSC member in concert with the principal able to change a credit offering and teacher staffing without soliciting the full LSC or PPLC? Are candidates for LSC able to list non-residential addresses or PO boxes on their candidate forms when they run for office? Are teacher representatives able to sign formal documents without taking advisory polls of the teachers they represent? For the Board's knowledge, I have worked with and sought answers from Network 15, LSC Relations, CPS Legal, and in some cases, the AG's office. People have worked diligently, but the issues are deep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one quick thing I want to thank you very much--
I'm sorry.
--for getting--
Ma'am.
--taking away Dr. Byer. He was a horrible principal. Thank you.
It's clear you have a different perspective. But next time, register. Okay, just before we go on to the other, we move to a different subject now?
We're on the next group.
Before I do that, I want to make an observation. Number one, the issue involving this principal is going through a process, and that process will lead to an ultimate resolution. And that's why those processes are in place. No decision here is arbitrary, and no decision here is not without review. Now, the other part of this is several of the speakers address a report from the Office of the Inspector General and attacked it for all practical purposes. People need to understand that the Office of the Inspector General is a creation of law, is a part of Illinois statute, and is intended to be, have an oversight function on the Board of Education. These offices also exist in other public institutions for the same reason. And while you have every right to express your displeasure or your disagreement, whether it's with decisions made by CPS leadership, Dr. Jackson, Chief McDade, and others, including the Board, who ultimately votes on these issues, you have a right to express your opinions. But that's what they are, their opinions. To impugn whether it comes from Dr. Jackson's office, or in this case, the OIG, that somehow this is a fabrication, again, you're entitled to the opinion. Whether those opinions are based on anything other than your unique beliefs, it's difficult to say. This forum exists for people to express their opinions. But you do need to understand, we have very clear processes that we attempt to follow, and indeed, I think we do. Recommendations are not made lightly. You don't remove a principal arbitrarily. You do it because you believe that you have-- I don't honestly need your agreement. I just need you to listen. We don't do this arbitrarily. These decisions are not made by Chief McDade or Dr. Jackson because they decided that morning they wanted to do something to cause you difficulty. And to impugn without any real basis other than your opinion, reports coming out of the Office of the Inspector General, while it's troubling to me, again, I recognize you can express anything you want in these meetings, as long as you do it respectfully, and we allow that. But I don't want to let this particular section of discussions to conclude as if everything that was said is fact-based. They are opinions. Okay, let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our next speaker, please, Speaker number four, Andrew Broi.
CEO Jackson, President Clark, members of the Board, Andrew Broi, head of INCS. Given the statements earlier by Mr. Sharkey about charter public schools, I wanted to correct the record on a couple of those. I'll pick one because of time constraints. One, he made the claim that somehow charter schools holding reserve fund is bad policy, not spending money in the classroom. The fact of the matter is CPS's own internal policy requires all charter public schools to have a reserve fund, and good nonprofit governance suggests 90 days of reserve fund. So it's not a problem with the system, it's a feature of the system. Now, with respect to the strike, it's unfortunate that nearly 8,000 students are out of school today and their families inconvenienced. We are hopeful the strike can be taken care of quickly, but I want to say what this is really about. At bottom, what the CT really wants is a single standardized union contract for charter teachers across the city. Such a one-size-fits-all policy is not only bad for students, it's terrible for acero. And it's the exact opposite of innovation that's the hallmark of the charter school community. Consider these innovations and all the ways in which Chicago charter schools have modeled practices standard in the city now. Extending the school day to increase student learning, using the MAP assessment to evaluate schools on growth rather than proficiency, creating a focus on college-going and college placement. All these initiatives, all of them, were pioneered in the charter schools and now are a feature of CPS. Likewise, the charter community has learned from traditional CPS schools in several key areas, including expansion of IB programs and personalized learning. That is the best of the charter movement and the heart of what we seek to do. Innovate, share practices, improve schools broadly. INCS continues to be about supporting high-performing schools of all types, including charter public schools. And no matter what happens with the strike, and again, I'm optimistic we can solve this quickly, that is what we're going to focus on going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broi.
Thank you very much.
And our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 31, please, Michael Nash, followed by Speaker 45, Jessica Byrd.
Good day, everyone. My name is Michael Nash, and I am the parent of a sixth grader at Avalon CICS School. My son's been there since kindergarten, and the reason that he's at Avalon is because we felt that the traditional neighborhood school available to us let us down. Upon my wife and I doing our due diligence, visiting the school, speaking with the principal, speaking with staff members, and even some of the kids that we saw floating around, we determined that the school had a culture of failure. The school had abysmal performance, and it was not a place that I felt like my son would be able to reach any level of potential that he possesses. With that being said, we started to seek out other options. We did not know about charter schools because they were not available. They were not in existence when I was in school. We went and visited five charter schools, ultimately choosing Avalon. One of the main reasons we chose Avalon was because of inclusion as well as structure, and it just felt like a place of learning. Once we got there and we started to get more acclimated with the staff, we realized that we had made a good choice. He is now in his seventh year there. The school has an open-door policy. The school has creative incentives to give the children reasons to want to do better. And I know there's a lot of degrees sitting up on that panel, bachelors, masters, and so on and so forth. So I'm asking you to have some common sense, because sometimes all those degrees don't equal basic common sense. Let's support any school that's either doing well, let's even support schools that aren't doing well. Because when your school does well, that is the foundation of any neighborhood. A great school attracts great residents to any area. Build it, and they will come. Thank you for supporting our school. I'm biased to CICS Avalon, but please support all of your schools. You all have a good day.
Before you leave, was the essence of your message, just what you just ended--
The essence of the message, sir, is that these schools are lacking support.
Across the board.
Across the board.
Okay. When you gave us that backhanded compliment, I wanted to make sure I understood where you were going. Okay, thanks very much.
You did understand. You got common sense.
And the next speaker for the group is Jessica Byrd, please.
I'm Jessica Byrd, and I'm a parent of students at CICS Avalon. I have a third grader and a sixth grader. I'm also the aunt of a second grader and a fifth grader. And we plan on making this a whole family thing, having all the little kids enrolled at Avalon. My oldest actually transitioned from CPS to a charter school. And we chose Avalon because of the structure, because it's welcoming, it's like family-oriented. And when you walk into the office, well, when you walk into the building, period, they know you. They don't just know you as mom and dad, they know you by name. They know what child belongs to you. Again, with the culture, and it's intriguing, family-- it's just, with the open-door policy, you come in at any time. You don't have to schedule a visit. Whenever you guys are ready, you all can come on over and see how good Avalon is doing for the community. Everybody looks out for each other, supports one another, and it's based for the kids. The kids, it's a learning environment. You can walk in and feel the children are learning. You don't see kids running around the building. You can tell who's a student, who's a teacher, who's a staff member. Everybody's under, everybody follows the same rules. No one is better than the next. And it's, only thing I could really pretty much say is family. It's family. They treat you just like you're a part of their family. So whenever you guys are ready, if you want to come today, if you follow us there, to come and see the goodness of-- and we're number-one charter school for CPS. So that speaks volumes over everything. And like Mr. Nash said, support.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really respect the passion and concern and support you have demonstrated for your school, for Avalon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our next group, I will call Speaker number seven, please, Tanika Meeks, followed by Speaker 10, Ebony Williams. We will then have Speaker 40, Tina Williams, and Speaker 38, Brooke Kennedy, please. Tanika Meeks.
My name is Tanika Meeks. Members of the Board, it's an honor to address you today regarding the future of the Noble Network of Charter Schools and Hansberry College Prep. The future of our children is in the hands of all of us. As they only able to be able to leave productive, they are all well and educated. From Hansberry College Prep, I watched my cousin Ryan Townsend not only graduated, and she became a full-time student at Illinois State, but also I learned because a part of diverse proactive village where students give their all, students are empowered, cheerful to go out into the Austin-Grossville area, sharing the enthusiasm for living, learning, learning in the community. I want the same enthusiasm for my son Tyler. I want him to have the opportunity to be well-prepared for college, having the essential ACT training, and even to join science clubs and available STEM programs. I appreciate it, my family appreciates it, as do the seniors and the community, bus operators, the coaches, parents, and the Noble Charter School community and the stakeholders. We love our school, they love the community, and we love the Hansberry community. And I want to thank you for the timing, opportunity to hear me out.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks.
Your son is fortunate to have a mother like you speaking for him. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker, please, Ebony Williams.
Good morning. My name is Ebony Williams. I'm a parent of a senior at Johnson College Prep. In April of 2016, our lives changed dramatically due to Chicago's gun violence. I became a single parent of three children, with the oldest being at the end of her freshman year at Johnson College Prep. We got through her freshman year with minimal impact, but at the beginning of the next year, things changed. My daughter became withdrawn and disengaged from school, our traditions were interrupted, our lives were different. I had almost lost my teenager, whose heart was broken and had sunk into a slight depression as her grades dropped. I struggled to find a way into my daughter's mind and heart, so I went out on a limb and reached out to her advisors at Johnson. My daughter was drowning, and I did not know how to get her a life jacket. Over the course of that year, I worked closely with all teachers and administrators to get and keep my daughter on track, and my God, that was the best decision I could have made. The progress that I've seen in my college-bound scholar, who has since been accepted to Alcorn University, transcended all expectations I had, not in her abilities, but in the abilities of us as a community to pull together, to work together for the good of this one student. It hit me at this point that this isn't a one-off situation. This is a way of life for the Noble Network. Any quick run-up to a classroom, and you will hear the buzz of not just scholars, but the adults who know the scholars by name, who recognize this, not when they're breaking the rules, but also when they're following them, not when grades are dropping, but when grades are brought up. And it was just not my daughter. The kids in this underserved district do well in a state that is failing its kids, who live outside of wealthy suburbs, and they do so because Johnson loves differences. I see how well Johnson coordinates working parent schedules and how easy Johnson makes for parents to stay involved. I love the way Noble has developed programs, not only for the traditionally gifted students, but for the students that may need a little assistance as well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And our next speaker, please, Tina Williams.
Hello, Board. My name is Tina Williams Bay Muhammad. I'm here today not just behalf of Johnson College Prep, but for the students and the parents of the Noble Network of Charter Schools. Noble has impacted me in several ways. I was told about Johnson Prep in my son's eighth-grade year. Wasn't sure about the choice, but however, when my husband and I visited Noble Johnson, we knew that this was the choice. Our youngest of seven will graduate June 7. I just got a message while sitting here that he did get accepted to Illinois State University. Johnson took a shy, quiet young boy who suffers from epilepsy and turned him into a bright, easygoing, laid-back young man who's looking forward to attending college. I thank Johnson for that. Najee is no longer suffering from epilepsy and is on his way to a bright future. I truly can say that Johnson cares. Najee's advisor, who no longer is with Johnson, took the time to call me on grade pickup day to make sure Najee was doing what he was supposed to be doing. Who does that? Being a mother of seven, I've experienced seven different high schools. Johnson Prep is among my top school. I'm asking that you support the Noble Network of Charter Schools so that one day my granddaughters can attend Johnson. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And our last speaker, please, 38, Brooke Kennedy. That's it? Thank you so much. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 24, please, Lucy Weatherly, and Speaker 14, Harold Wetzel for Intrinsic, followed by Speaker number nine, Mary Santana, and Speaker 12, Simone Alexander. Please state your name.
Lucy Weatherly.
Harold Wetzel.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Can you proceed?
Sure. On behalf of Intrinsic Schools, we want to thank the Board of Education for considering our proposal and for the work you guys do for all CPS students. While we are deeply disappointed in the recommendation to deny our proposal, we remain committed to serving more Chicago students via our unique model that has warranted a Level 1+ rating for the past four years, that has had over 200 educators, including CPS and people around the world, to come see our model. Everything that we create, we give away for free. We created Intrinsic, me and Mr. Wetzel here. We took the risk on something new as founding parents alongside many others, on something different for post-secondary success for the lives of our children. For lives that meant something, that meant more than ours. I think as parents, that's what ultimately we want for our children, is something more. Through that educational community, the goal was to replicate that and to expand that through Chicago, and that more people would be excited about what was happening within our families. Five years later, we're proud, we stand here so proud of what we were able to accomplish. Not only am I a super enthusiast for Intrinsic, but I'm also a proud, proud parent, proud mom of a son who's a sophomore at the Paul University, who through the post-secondary process inspired me, and I stand here as a proud wildcat of Northwestern University at 40 years old, sharing research paper tips with my son, and just excited about what our community is doing. And if given the chance, expand that community. I was actually the one who led the canvassing project over the summer that took over 3,700 signatures of--
Ms. Weatherly.
Oh, I'm so sorry. But we were just really excited. Everyone's really excited about the opportunity, about expanding in the future, and just how-- proud we are of our community.
Thank you for your comments. And our next speaker, then, please, speaker 14, Harold Wetzel.
Hello, everybody. I'm up here today to just say, if you can, please just give Intrinsic a chance. My kids come from the South Side of Chicago. I drive all the way every morning to Belmont Kill there from 95th and, well, right off 95th and Stoney. I have a college, a college kid now. He started at Intrinsic downtown. They expanded the school to where, where it is now at Belmont Kill there. He graduated, he was one of the first graduating classes along with Ms. Weatherly's son, and he attends UIC now downtown. I have two other children that go there. Like I said, I make that drive every day, and I would love for them to be expanded so I can have my fourth child come there once he's of age. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetzel, for your comments. And our next group, then, I should say speaker, then, is speaker number nine, Mary Santana. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Simone Alexander.
While we're still on Intrinsic, which is a good charter network, you understand the message. Build the school or expand where CPS needs it, and we perhaps would have a different conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Alexander.
Thanks. I'm a parent at Tapo Shkali Elementary School and a 15-year Little Village resident. Last Monday, I attended the ARA meeting for the Pilsen Little Village region. And while I'd like to believe that we're moving in a new era of transparent and meaningful community engagement related to CPS decision-making, there are a number of reasons why it's hard to fully believe. CPS's history hasn't bred trust. The background check changes that happened this year particularly hit hard in Little Village. And while I appreciate that Dr. Jackson was present, she didn't stay to hear directly from stakeholders, many of whom participated with their children present with no childcare available. So I hope that in future planning meetings, we allow for more meaningful engagement between CPS leadership and people like me who spend every day in our schools. Most of all, the ARA report is not what we should be using for making critical decisions about our schools. It was created by an organization that's led by people who have intentionally undermined the well-being of neighborhood schools and who have fueled the displacement of Black and Brown families. If we're worried about dropping CPS enrollment, please let's address city and CPS policies and practices that fuel gentrification. The report also revolves around the SQRP, which should never be used to make critical decisions about schools. It's overwhelmingly based on test scores and attendance, which have been proven over and over to be more linked to the socioeconomic status of students and to the actual quality of schools. They also change frequently. Over the last four, uh, four years, 12% or 55% of Little Village schools have shifted from the one or 1+ to 2 or vice versa at least once. This includes Tapo Shkali, which barely missed a Level 1 rating this year due primarily to last year's attendance. There's also data that's missing. There's only a tiny reference to the Building Utilization Formula, which we know fuels CPS decisions. And Tapo Shkali's capacity, for some reason, went from 3 to 400 in a year, which is 30, a 33% increase, and makes absolutely no sense. So there's a number of problems with, with the utilization formulas. It also didn't take into account the most important things, and those are demographics. At Tapo Shkali, 66% of students are ELL compared to 20% across CPS elementary schools. Sorry, I have so much to say about the ARA report, I should probably come back at the next three meetings. Mostly, I want to say that, that data isn't, can't be taken at face value. Please come to our schools, talk to us directly, those of us that are in schools every day, parents, teachers, students, in future planning meetings. Let's not use data that we can blow holes in, but also isn't even including the data that's most important about why we're reaching the students that need the most support.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you.
Our next group, Mr. President, speaker number 15, please, Sarah Dennis, followed by speaker 43, Ryan O'Donnell, 47, Karen Cruz, and 52, Anna Maria Sanchez. Sarah Dennis, last call. Ryan O'Donnell. Karen Cruz. Anna Marie Sanchez. We'll move on, then, to the next group for Moving Everest Charter, and we'll have speaker number 16, please, John Zayas, followed by speaker 17, Michael Rogers.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to switch with Pastor John. I prefer not to follow a pastor when it comes to public speaking, if that's okay. Mr. President, CEO, Jackson and Board, Mike Rogers, founder and executive director at Moving Everest. At a press conference this summer, Mayor Emanuel and leaders from Chicago Public Schools announced plans to build a new state-of-the-art elementary school and adjoining community center in the Belmont-Cragan neighborhood, in part to over, address overcrowding among Belmont-Cragan schools, which are roughly over 1,400 students over capacity. The school and community center would have socially-emotional learning workshops, its teachers' programs and education style would be trauma-informed, and the school would be rooted in building resiliency, and would include a wellness center that provides space for health providers. Coincidentally, it's exactly what we put in front of the North Austin and Belmont-Cragan community, a thoughtful, well-designed, trauma-informed, purposeful school, Moving Everest Campus Two. A strong school plus a well-established, highly effective after-school partnership, and a community center that has roots in the community more than a decade. A web of relationships, a web of supports for children and families to realize a transformed life. For kids and their families, this comprehensive level of support provides hope in the tangible forms of an excellent education, increased opportunities, and abundant resources and personalized support. And here's what the community said. They responded with overwhelming support, almost nine, uh, 900-plus petition signatures, 200-level letters of intent to enroll, 80 letters of support gathered at 70 community meetings and 25 community events attended. We agree with the mayor, and evidently so does the community. The community wants this type of coordinated web of support. In our current school, they've seen what a strong school can provide in partnerships with a strong after-school program. And adding the resources and network of supports of the Revive Center further strengthens the positive impact we can make on the community. We would ask that you would reconsider the motion to deny and instead approve Moving Everest Campus Two.
Mr. Rogers, thank you. And our next speaker, please, Mr. Zayas.
Good afternoon. Speaking from the community, for 10 years, I've been championing this opportunity to work alongside a school and this mission to bring community and schools together. My boots are tired. I've walked community, I've walked blocks to champion this, even to the board, to say, I need a school that we can create a wraparound program. With all that we do at the Revive Center, folks in this board have seen the facility, have walked the facility with me, and have agreed that there is a need in our community. We're in North Austin, right next to Belmont-Cragan Hermosa, where there is a flow, a wave of immigrants coming our way. There are folks coming, Latinos, who are growing in that area, and we need schools, we need support. And I'm asking, I am begging that you would change your mind and finally give us the opportunity to do the work that we're doing. In August, we gave out 1,500 book bags to kids in the community. In, in September, we did, and October, we did a harvest fest. Over 500 folks attended to have a day of rest, just to have fun like everyone else in the suburbs would do, with pumpkins and apple pie and all kinds of great stuff. In November, we gave 400 meals, food, turkeys, all kinds of stuff, to 400 families. And this Saturday, we're serving 187 families for Christmas, over 300 kids receiving gifts with partnerships of World Vision, Sodat Foundation, networking partners all over the place. Please give us an opportunity to make it right. It's not about numbers.
Mr. Zayas.
There's a flow coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be speaker number 19, please, Lynetta Thomas, followed by speaker number 42, Curtis Brown. We then have speaker number 20, Arnie Steber, Steber, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Lynetta Thomas. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Catalyst Circle Rock Campus. I'm here to communicate about my experience as a parent. So my daughter is, um, she's in the fifth grade, and we had four years in private school, and we've been at Catalyst for the last four years. Catalyst is an awesome school, and if I could, I would take my $20,000 that I spent on private school and invested in that school. Communication is consistent, proactive, daily, weekly. I, that's a huge difference from what the private school. We were only allowed to speak to the teachers during our quarterly progress reports, and you can send an email and maybe get a response within 24 to 48 hours. So to have teachers reach out to you daily and knowing that you can communicate daily is a huge advantage. The curriculum is rigorous, and it is accommodating to address individual needs of students, and the teachers are dynamic and extremely enthusiastic. I, um, I'm impressed every year. I thought the second grader, uh, grade teachers were the best, and every year, I'm more and more impressed. The school reaches out to the community and does a ton of events that include new parents, new members to the community, and it's very positive. So I love my Catalyst community, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Where did you say you spent $20,000? I, I caught my attention.
I wasn't going to call them out, but Providence, same L.
And you said you'd rather spend it where?
At Catalyst.
Okay, let's want to be clear.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Last call for Curtis Brown. And our next speaker, please, speaker number 20, Arnie Steber.
Different topic, same bottom line. My name is Arnie Steber. I'm here to explain why I oppose junior ROTC and all things military that's going on at Chicago Public Schools. I left Vietnam in March of 1971. I thought the experience didn't change me, but I found myself avoiding books and movies and all discussions to do with the military as well as violence. But my life went on. In January of 2003, I was home alone, I turned on the TV, and the movie Platoon was playing. And I thought, after all those years, I could handle it, wouldn't have any effect on me. The scene was the US Patrol entering a village. I saw the children standing there with their elders, and it all came back. Brutality, the savagery, I could feel it, I could smell it, and I didn't know what was happening. I mentally dropped out of life for many months. I read everything I could on war and politics and history. I eventually formulated two questions. Why war? And why do we so proudly send our children to kill other children? The first answer was easy. I was in business. War is a business. The second answer was deeper, and is in our culture. We're trained to send our children to kill. It's considered honorable here. I've concluded that the military's primary purpose is the infliction of violence. And those in the military, I was one of them, are pawns in the rich man's business of conquest. When I see a child, and I have two grandkids, I remember the children, the parents, the villages-
Mr. Steber.
The animals. I'll, I'll conclude. The environment that we brutalized in Vietnam, and that savagery continues today. There's 76 conflicts going on with US involvement today. Those are the reasons I oppose junior ROTC and all things military. It teaches us to follow orders and to be barbarians. We say education, not militarization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steber.
As I've done on a number of occasions, I went through the ROTC at CPS, thought it was a great experience. You left Vietnam in, you said, '71. I left in '68. Our experiences there were remarkably different, and our prospects, how we see things, are also quite different. I think that it's a matter of choice. People who serve to honor their country through military service is something that's honorable. You have a different perspective. I don't agree with it, I just respect your right to say it, and you say it often. But when you do, occasionally, I have the need to talk about a person that went through the same as you, but a different experience. And, um, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may just take a step back, I had called a group of speakers, and there was two of them that they were in the overflow room, so they are here, and I'm going to call them now. There's speaker 15, please, Sarah Dennis, and speaker 43, Ryan O'Donnell.
Thank you. Greetings. My name is Dr. Sarah Dennis, graduate of CPS, now an adjunct professor at Loyola University in UIC. Today, I'm here to read parts of letters from fourth graders from CPS Hammond Elementary who wished to be here and read it to themselves, but were told they needed network approval for a field trip. Is that true? Here's an excerpt from Anna Marie Sanchez. "My class and I found out that Columbus did not discover America. Many Indians were already living here. He killed many Indians while he was looking for gold, and if they didn't do what he said, he would cut off their fingers. He enslaved Indians." Karen Cruz wrote similarly. "My class and I found out that Columbus did not find America. I mean, Indians were living here. He killed a lot of Indians. He was looking for gold, and if they didn't listen to Christopher, he would cut off their fingers. He made a lot of Indians slaves." Sixth grader at Sawyer Elementary, Lydia wrote, "Should we really be honoring a man who killed people who lived here and then stole all they had? It's basically like us honoring a rapist for raping someone, or a serial killer for killing innocent people. That's messed up. So I'm here to turn in another 780 signatures, including 260 by students, collected by students, bringing a grand total submitted to 1,695 to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Did you know that Columbus supervised the selling of Native girls ages nine to 10 into sexual slavery? In 1500, Columbus wrote in his log, 'There are plenty of dealers who go about looking for girls. Those from ages nine to 10 are now in demand. As a mother of a 10-year-old, I don't want anyone learning about Columbus as a hero.' There are amazing resources to teach more accurate history and rethinking Columbus and Thanksgiving, a Native perspective. Could CPS buy these for schools? Did you know that the Office of Social Studies has only one elementary specialist for the entire city?' So there's a quote from the editor of Rethinking Schools in here. "There's a very real danger in teaching the Columbus myth. Children infer, might makes right, white people should rule over people who aren't white, Christians should control non-Christians, and advanced nations should dominate backward nations. Celebrating Columbus Day is like Germany having an Adolf Hitler Day. This is a policy change that's free and an easy win for CPS. Let's begin educating our young children more accurately than most of us were taught and change the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day." Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please, Ryan O'Donnell.
Just again, for the record, and I need our general counsel to confirm this, the, you, you, you've raised this issue to the board multiple times. To change that recognition, I believe, requires a state action. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, the Illinois School Code requires observance of Columbus Day in public schools.
No, that's not true.
And then, well, I'm going to, I, I know you're a professor and obviously a smart person, but, no, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Talk to Superintendent Tony Smith, he said it's not true.
Hold on.
You can apply for a waiver. You can just apply for a waiver.
We still have to go back to the state.
Miles has done it.
But let me, let me finish.
Evanston has done it, Oak Park has done it. So you just apply for a waiver.
Would, would you let me finish?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the time being, I'm going to take the word of the general counsel. But then, number one. And number two, you know, I said this in our earlier meeting, you know, history is written by the victors. You heard that quote? So, you know, the, the, the way that Christopher Columbus is represented is by the people who, you know, took over. I don't think anyone takes, refused the fact that Native Americans were here when he got here. And I don't know if all the things you said are factually correct, but I know he died flat broke and didn't, didn't have a great life. So, you know, all the other things that you talked about, whether the facts are correct or not, I'm not going to debate one way or the other. I just want to clarify, whether you agree or disagree, it does require state action. And unless the general counsel tells me otherwise, I'm going to accept that. And, and, you know, some people, some, some states have acted. Maybe Illinois will one day. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. President, I would just note that the School Code does require observance of Columbus Day, and in those school districts that honor Indigenous Peoples' Day, they are honoring both. And that was the exception that the state has granted. And that was the exception that the state has granted.
But thank you. I mean, that, you're bringing this information and I appreciate that.
They have one additional speaker on that topic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ryan O'Donnell, please.
I didn't, I didn't know you were on the same topic. I would have waited.
Well, as we said before, that's not true. But good afternoon, board members and community members. My name is Ryan O'Donnell and I am an active member of the community. I've been involved with CPS, universities in Chicago, alderman offices and mayoral campaigns. In all the diverse interactions I have had with people concerned about the integrity and betterment of our community, it seems universally agreed upon that the initiative to dismantle the oppression that Columbus Day exemplifies succeed and be replaced with an honest account of the facts and the celebration of the peoples most harmed by the genocide Columbus spearheaded. In the words of Janelle, one bright sixth grade CPS student of Sawyer Elementary School, quote, "Columbus and his men murdered thousands of people." In a Young People's History of the United States, the author writes, "Airwax began to commit mass suicide with poison. The only reason the airwax did this was because they didn't want to be killed by Columbus's men. Airwax had to find gold for them, but if they didn't, their hands would get cut off and they would bleed to death or they would get burned to death or hanged. So before it could happen to them, they took their own lives away. When Columbus encountered the airwax, he thought they would make fine servants. With 50 men, we could subjugate them and make them do whatever we want. He was already thinking of power. There was no limit to what Columbus would do to get everything he wanted in life: money, power and fame. Columbus shouldn't be getting any credit. He didn't do anything great whatsoever. For these reasons and the countless others, I implore you, Janelle employs you, the thousands of people who signed these petitions implore you, and the thousands, even millions we represent, implore you to rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day." Thank you.
Thank you for your effort to educate us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Our next speakers, Mr. President, will be speaker number 21, please. Corey Kane, followed by speaker 35, Dennis Laswell from Urban Prep West. They will be followed by speaker 23, Sharita Ellens, speaker 25, Ann Yuselak, and 26, Joanna Su. Thank you. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Corey Kane, principal of Urban Prep Charter Academy for Young Men West Campus. I'm here today on behalf of the Urban Prep community to request that the Board of Education vote no to revoking the West Campus Charter. In 2009, Urban Prep West answered the call from CPS to open a high school serving boys in the East Garfield Park community. Our students are our city's most at-risk population. They're all African-American males, 85% qualify for free reduced lunch and 29% have IEPs. They are victims and survivors of gun violence and trauma. Ten of our West Campus students have been shot and five of them killed. Despite a society aimed at destroying young black males, despite reduced enrollment exacerbated by CPS moving our campus from the East Garfield Park community, despite financial challenges caused by reduced funding and increased expenses, including CPS deducting $1.3 million for facility charges over the past five years, we have continued to fulfill our mission and 100% of our graduates have been admitted to four-year colleges and universities. Our school requires twice as many credits in English as traditional public schools, has an extended school day, offers robust after-school programs and provides daily mentoring, promoting social, emotional growth and positive self-esteem. Given our student success, we have, we are shocked that CPS would consider revoking the West Campus Charter. This is particularly confounding because the West Campus Charter was just renewed last year and since that renewal, the SCORP score for the West Campus has improved from 2.4 to 2.7. Additionally, since the finances of the West Campus are directly linked to CPS funding, a more productive approach than revoking our charter would be to revoke the CPS policy of charging us rent, equalling over $1,000 per student annually. The Urban Prep motto is "We Believe," and we will continue to believe in the mission of our school and the young men we serve. It is our hope that you will continue to believe as well and not revoke the charter for Urban Prep West Campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And our next speaker, please.
Thank you very much.
Dennis Laswell?
No.
No? Okay, thank you, sir. Our next speaker then, speaker 23, please, Sharita Ellens. Last call. Moving on to speaker 25, please, Ann Yuselak.
Hello, my, hello, my name is Ann Yuselak and I'm 11 years old and I have type 1 diabetes and I came here to tell you because I want the people who can make changes to know what it's like to be, to be a kid with type 1 diabetes at CPS. I am here to tell you that kids need a real nurse. I am lucky to have something called a continuous glucose monitor, which my mom manages remotely, but she tells me if she did not have this, she cannot send me to school and lots of kids do not have this. I have had so many different nurses this year and that have no idea about my diabetes or how to treat me. Some of them don't even understand diabetes very well. Well, one left me with a note that said he's, he's on break and just to leave him a note with my blood sugar number on it. Another nurse refused to listen to me when I told him he was overdosing me with insulin. I'm scared and I think CPS should be able to do better. I always feel safe with my nurses at Rush University and I wish I could feel the same at school. Just last month, I was taken on a field trip without a nurse and was, and without my emergency supplies. Often, there is nobody in the nurse's office when I show up. Luckily, my mom is available and I have my cellphone to contact her every time there's a problem, which is often. I feel so sorry for the kids who don't have a mom who can't be there nonstop. They must feel so scared and I hope you will help.
Thank you. You're obviously fortunate to have a mom that's on top of this and you seem to be quite informed yourself. Chief McDade, any response to this or anyone, you want to respond to this?
Yes, our chief officer for Diverse Learner Services, Dr. Liz Keenan, has been looking into this matter, so she does have a response.
Hi, Ann. Thank you for coming here today and we are aware of your situation and I want you to know that we're working on these pieces of it. We know that it's very scary when you don't have that support right there and we know that, we've been hearing that from other parents too, so we take this very seriously and I appreciate you coming. We are also trying to make sure that we are providing quality supports to all students and thank you for being that advocate. And we're going to continue to try to improve these pieces of it. And I think the other piece that we want to work on too is making sure that there's training that's supports at the school level. I know that that hasn't always been the case and so that we have not just the nurse, but somebody else to be able to support the training around that too. Thank you.
One more comment as you leave. This is an issue that board members have talked to staff about it and we understand their, we know their staffing issues, we know that their vendor issues, but actually none of these should be your issue. It is completely unacceptable that your daughter and any other student requiring medical attention doesn't get not only medical attention, but I think the word is adequate incompetent attention. So we're, we're aware of this, we've talked about this internally. You should never be in a situation where you're dealing with someone that's not competent and we're truly focused on it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, speaker 26, Joanna Su. As she approaches the podium then, our next speaker will be speaker 33, Danielle Lawson, followed by 36, Mary Hughes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Su. I'm a parent and the LSC secretary for Gale Elementary in Rogers Park. I'm here to share some good news as well as a serious concern. First, I'm thrilled to report that Gale is now at Level 2 Plus after being stalled at Level 2 for years. Also, community partners have built an onsite clinic and have transformed our learning garden. This is a huge credit to our principal, Augusta Numuwa, and our teachers and the entire school community. Unfortunately, I'm also here to discuss a huge lapse by CPS related to our principal's contract. The detailed timeline is in the handout, which I hope you all have, which I'll summarize. In 2016, our former principal was removed by CPS. The LSC was initially told this was an action under Section 8.3 of the school code, in other words, for academic reasons, so the LSC would not be able to hire until we're off probation for two years. However, six months later, CPS told us their principal had retired, so we could go ahead and hire. The LSC went through the selection process in partnership with our network chief, the Office of LSC Relations and the Law Department. We signed the contract and in 2018, we completed the annual principal evaluation. Given the many hours that we had spent on this process, you can imagine the anger that we felt when we learned that our signed contract is now considered invalid by CPS. CPS representatives apologized, but they couldn't explain what happened. They said we have to be off probation for five years, but they couldn't say exactly when that clock starts. They said that our principal is an interim who serves year to year at the pleasure of the CEO, but Gale's moving in the right direction and we don't want to have our progress set back. Our students and staff shouldn't have to suffer more uncertainty as a result of missteps by CPS. This is unacceptable. We would like to sit down with Dr. Jackson and the network chief to discuss three things. First, how this happened and what CPS is doing to ensure it won't happen again. Second, a clear definition of the timeframe and conditions needed for us to regain our roles, the LSC. Third, a list of the intensive supports we'll receive while on probation. Gale parents and LSC members have been working hard with our principal. We need CPS to hold its end of the bargain by being responsive, professional and accountable for its actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Su.
Chief McDade, is that, do you want to respond?
Yes, I would like to respond. One, I want to say that, and I don't have all of the details on what went wrong, so I'm going by what you've shared. If there was an error, I want to apologize for that. I also want to acknowledge that your principal is a highly respected principal in the district and so he's doing a great job. Everything that you're saying is absolutely true and so we will work with you to find out what the timeline is. I, I have a member of my team here, Elisa Botello, on the way out. If you can stop and provide your information to her, we will schedule that meeting to discuss with the LSC and the network chief, all of the concerns that you may have currently in terms of principal selection and contract, so that we can resolve them.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll continue. Our next speaker, please, speaker 33, Danielle Lawson.
Before my minutes start, I have to read from here instead of here. Greetings. My name is Danielle Lawson, vet educator, credible IG whistleblower. Federal state CPS policies have been ignored by Dr. Tyrese Graham, interim principal of Uplive Community High. I was assaulted by a student. I have consistently sent communique to admin concerning the culture of chaos in various classrooms, including my co-taught classes. My assignments included co-teaching two classes to a first-year teacher, 10th grade level lead, grade level lead, taught one class and being case manager support. As the first quarter was ending, my duties as case manager support discontinued and shifted to training as a Read 180 Literacy Intervention educator. At that time, I was informed that I was to teach an additional course to one student who was failing all of his classes. The third day of my encounter with this student on 11/9/18 resulted in me being body slammed. The student who displayed erratic behavior exited the class. Unbeknownst to me, hid behind the brick obstruction in the hallway of my doorway, out of the camera view. He smiled and charged at me. Graham, Chief Lamone, Labor Relations, Police, Safety and Security have been notified by me and Dr. Graham has refused to follow Article 14 of the BOECTU agreement. The student code of conduct has been ignored and my benefit days have been held hostage. I have not been to work since this has happened. I reached out over 40 times in an effort to procure an incident report as well as authorization of my benefit days. I am not safe. Dr. Graham had knowledge that this student had a friend to swipe him in as present on 11/7/18. Graham, Dean Robert Wallace and AP Jennifer White never reported said incident. This student has been legally found guilty, that was Tuesday, and Dr. Graham provided court with lies concerning my assault. Furthermore, the student's IEP didn't deem him eligible for instructional services. I noted federal infractions to admin and Graham was made aware that I held no endorsement in World Studies.
Ms. Lawson.
The IG has been notified of other sinister actions ordained by Dr. Graham, including one of a sexual nature. I noted that in logger. I am demanding the following: An incident report. Admin team removed immediately. And all of my benefit days be authorized no later than today. And I am commanding a meeting within five business days with you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you very much and I would like to give thanks to Elizabeth Kirby. She answered my email. Director Special Ed never called me back. Christine Turner never answered. Nobody. And I am tired of this. 25 years. If I were a white woman, an incident report would have happened and I would have been consoled. I am black and I am convinced that that's the reason why I have not been supported.
So JD, are you aware of this? Okay, and Chief McDade? Oh. Okay, take it offline, but you are on top of this, Matt?
No, I have no incident report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, please, speaker 36, Mary Hughes. As she approaches the podium, we'll then call speaker 40, Mary Alice, and speaker 41, Cassandra Bogan.
Mr. Clark, we appreciate your concerns about the nursing crisis in CPS and let me just first say, I'm Mary Hughes. I'm a board member of Raise Your Hand. We've had a series of meetings with Liz Keenan and Arnie Rivera and CPS parents who are impacted by the nursing crisis and I call it a crisis because even though everyone knows that there is not enough care to go around and we've been dealing directly with CPS at a very high level, the people in this group are still without nursing care for their children. There's one woman with very high need who has spoken to the board before. She doesn't have any nursing care available for her child while she's in school. There's another woman who is still unavailable, unable to get medical care for emergency medical need at her child's school, putting her child's life in danger if that's not possible. We've been encouraged by the meetings, but we, we've also been ignored in a certain way. The parent, we've brought, we've brought to the attention of CPS that there are other, other means of providing this kind of care that lie outside the current structures in the form of healthcare clerks or, and that, that's happening in, that's happening in various districts around the state of Illinois and the country and CPS has chosen to hire more temporary agencies. We have been request, one thing that has been clear about our communications with CPS is that the temp agencies are not working.
Ms. Hughes?
There are, we've met, temp agency workers are unreliable and unmanageable and they're proposing a $26 million contract that gives our kids three times more the risk of a nurse making an egregious error. We need a long-term sustainable solution that lies outside of more temp agency nurses. It's not working and it's putting our children at risk.
The reference you made to healthcare providers that are not nurses, what are they called?
Health clerks. It would be a position at each school where...
And what districts outside of CPS do they exist in?
We've given all the information to ODLSS, Mr. Rivera and Ms. Keenan.
I don't think that CPS is closed to anything. I know that the board is looking at adding the number of vendors and not necessarily relying on the sole source. I've said this from a board perspective, but I also know this is the focus of Dr. Jackson and all of her senior team. We recognize that we have an issue here. There's just no question about that. Part of it is a national issue because of the shortage of nurses, but you know, the fact that we have a vendor issue or a staffing issue, as I said earlier, is not an adequate answer.
Right. I agree.
The only adequate answer is to resolve the problem. I just wanted to hear what this additional component you brought in.
Right.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Our next speaker, Mr. President, is speaker 40, please, Mary Alice.
Hi, my name is Mary and I am the chair of the Bylaws Committee for the Office of Diverse Learners Parent Advisory Council. I joined the pack because I wanted to be part of the solution as CPS repairs the fractured Office of Diverse Learner infrastructure. Dr. Keenan offered a vision and a framework that would include a representation of parents from the entire district, working with parent, working with the parent involvement specialists to empower parents and build relationships. That framework was rejected by a group of parents, mostly in network... That framework was rejected by a group of parents, mostly in Network 4, and an overrepresentation in the pack, and they have insisted on a framework that does not ensure equity and does not account for the underserved, marginalized, and underrepresented in the district. As I thought about a way forward, the solution came to me in the form of an email that I received from my face office in regards to the formation of the Title I Board of Governors, which is a parent advisory council for the district with an established framework. And we all know that old saying that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I asked myself, why can't we use the N60 framework? I came before this board today because there has been a climate in the group of exacerbating parent fears that CPS lacks integrity and is not operating in a transparent way. And I wanted this to come out in a public space and to know that this is a very real parent concern and assessment requiring an intervention. So I asked because we would like to proceed with doing this great work that you guys know that we can do as an advisory council and get something done. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your offer of providing assistance. I'm sure Chief McDade is aware of you and your organization. I don't know where the fit comes in, and I won't pretend that I do, but you are clearly trying to do something constructive, and we appreciate that.
Well, it's really, we need an infrastructure. We've been trying to get this work off the ground, and it's going on now, half the year is gone, and I would like for us to move in our ambassador roles and actually be a voice for a lot of the diverse learner community, but we're not able to move forward. So I'd like to utilize the Title I framework.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may acknowledge, Board Member Furlong has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll continue with the next speaker, please. Speaker 41, Cassandra Bogan.
Cassandra Bogan, local school council parent member. I'm here to address some concerns regarding the lack of accountability and compliance by the current administration at King College Prep. In particular, particularly, local school council members, as well as myself, believe that the current administrative team is violating CPS policy as well as state law. I have three particular situations. One is breakfast after the bail mandate. 2017, 2018 school year, our teenagers were allowed to grab and go, which is one of the recommended models. This school year, they are not allowed to grab and go. The principal has directed them that they must sit in the cafeteria and eat breakfast. The problem is, if they're sitting in the cafeteria eating breakfasts after the bail, they are missing instructional time. The next item is fiscal responsibility when it comes to fundraisers. King College Prep hosted a homecoming back in October. As a local school council member, when we received the reports, the monthly reports, we saw that there were some discrepancies with the amount of the deposit versus the amount of ticket sales. We were asked for clarification. We were given a revised report. The numbers automatically changed. They went from selling 300, 400 tickets to 300 tickets because they failed to follow CPS policy, which says tickets should be numbered. They cannot verify how many tickets they numbered they sold, and they cannot verify what happened to coat check money. The third item that we needed to address is the principal wrote a check for $3,700, which clearly violates the state statute that the principal does not have the authority to issue payments beyond $2,500 without the local school council's approval. That check was written on November the 5th. We have not had a meeting to approve the issuance of the check. The check allegedly is sitting in someone's desk drawer or folder or wherever it is. The problem is, once again, that violates the policy, and it increases the potential for loss.
Ms. Bogan, can you please conclude? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers then are Speaker 44, Angelica Herrera, followed by Speaker 48, Hannah Susky. We then have Speaker 57, Bobby Townsend, 58 Eugene Henry, and the last speaker, Speaker 59, Michael Brown. Angelica Herrera, last call. Moving on to Hannah Susky, last call. Bobby Townsend. Eugene Henry, last call.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Eugene Henry, and I'm a retired CPS educator, serving as a teacher, coach, administrator, consultant, member of the DuSable Alumni Coalition, and also a proud 66th DuSable graduate. As a member of the Slope Breakers, Andrew Brown, President, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. The Slope Breakers is a 501(c)(3) social civic organization in the Bronzeville community, composed primarily of retired educators and former high school and college athletes from the Bronzeville and Chicagoland area. Our organization advocates for a better quality of life for young people, enabling them to become positive participants in the development of society. The Slope Breakers supports the DuSable Alumni Coalition for Action, Dr. Grace Dawson, President, in its effort and vision to see the consolidation of the two small schools currently at the DuSable campus become the new DuSable Academy for Advanced Technology. We understand that a proposal from the Alumni Coalition has been submitted with the expectation that the new DuSable High School can open in 2020. We commend the Alumni Coalition in this endeavor to restore the name and legacy of the historic landmark DuSable High School. We realize the significance of DuSable as a historic treasure, not only in Bronzeville, but in the city of Chicago as well. We ask that in implementing the proposal, the Alumni Coalition, community stakeholders, and others be given clear timelines and requirements sooner rather than later, so that timely solutions can be made in expediting the DuSable campus consolidation into the one new DuSable. The Slope Breakers are supportive in this effort, but we ask that the pause button not be hit in the implementation of the submitted proposal. I thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Chief McDade, where are we with this?
We did submit a letter basically stating that we are fully in support of engaging the community around the proposal, and that once those processes around community engagement occur, which would have to happen throughout the next school year, that if this is an action that moves forward, it would be for the 2021 school year. So that means we have to, we have to engage in a full community process to take a proposal like this into consideration.
Yeah, we would like to, if we can keep it going, not to wait until after May or whatever, you know, just keep this going.
Our intention is to continue the conversations and the discussions and engaging with the community. We in no way are stopping the process. We just want to make sure that we have a thorough and comprehensive process and that all voices are heard and that, you know, we follow through on our engagement process that we've established in all different actions of this nature.
Okay, because we know the board is busy, so.
Yeah. Well, just to add on that, what we can commit to is trying to work together, to put an outline together for the community engagement process. I think that's what you're asking for, just some assurance that this process is going to move forward. So I think putting together a timeline would be helpful, and that's something we can commit to do.
Okay.
So you've heard from the CEO and the Chief Academic Officer. Okay?
Very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, the last speaker then for public participation is 59, please. Michael Brown. Last call. Thank you. Mr. President, this concludes the public participation.
No, it doesn't.
Well, I thought we were going to call her after the questions. Just fine. Aisha? No.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank you, everyone, for giving me this chance and opportunity to sit here and listen and engage in the board meetings. It's a really amazing experience. And then I'm always learning something new here, sitting in this chair, knowing like what students and parents are thinking and what's going on around CPS. My parents didn't get the education in the system, and I'm the first one experiencing this, and I have siblings who are going to follow, hopefully, even a better path that I have followed. So being here and learning how amazing CPS is and how amazing everyone here is, giving their time and opportunity to, for everyone to speak at these board meetings. And I would also like to thank you, Board Member Gail Ward, for visiting Nicholasson High School. I hope you had a great time. It was really amazing to have you sit there and talk to my fellow students and my principal, and I hope you liked Sun. And I'm just really thankful to be here, and thank you so much.
If I may-
Go ahead.
If I may, President Clark, the amazing one is really Aisha Ahmed. She is a sublime hostess. Took me through Sun High School, set up a board meeting with students and her principal. And you might want to know that she did win all of her wrestling bids this last week and has a future, future wrestling career coming up in February with some more wrestling coming up with the, and I got to meet the wrestling teacher there as well. But other than that, you know, the school and the students were more than welcoming. It's a great culture and a great school to visit, and thank you for that.
Can I say one thing? I just, first, thank you for giving Aisha an opportunity to speak. It's really important to hear what students are saying and student perspective, but I also want to acknowledge her just as a district leader. Aisha is on the MICFA Chicago Public School Student Advisory Council. And this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to go and check out their student-led, student-organized, students-only, so thank you for letting me speak, opportunity where they hosted workshops around race and equity issues, healthy relationships with students and, between students and students and adults, et cetera. And I just want to thank her for her leadership outside of what you see in here today. I know we don't hear a lot from her, but you should notice she's working really, really hard. And they had, you know, over 200 students from about 20 different schools come out. So I just want to commend them for their hard work for the Student Leadership Conference.
You have, sorry, you have younger siblings?
Yeah.
How many?
Like four or five.
You're setting a phenomenal example for them by your advocacy, your leadership, et cetera. Yeah, it's inspiring.
And, you know, Trustee Jaime, just to add to that, what's also amazing is, and correct me if I'm wrong on this story, but Aisha applied last year to be a student representative and applied again this year. I think it's, I think it's amazingly wonderful, the example you've given, not only to your family, but to others, for your interest. Thank you very much.
And you'll get the opportunity before your time's up to share with us on where you think we could do, improve our process. I assume it's been an eye-opener for you, and I assume that when you said it's been an experience, you meant a good experience.
It is a good experience. I mean, like, from people who come in, their perspective, there's lack of communication. And then from CPS perspective, they're trying their best to reach out to the parents and solve their problems. And then I think from early on, the idea that I received is that CPS is not just a district that is filled with like 100 students. There's like thousands of students who you guys are trying to make sure that they are getting the educations that they should be receiving. And then whatever policy or whatever change that anybody wants to make, there's always going to be pros and cons to that. And then I think like understanding that is really important because people do come in with their problems, and they don't understand or try to understand that there's a lot of other things that is happening, and then there, that CPS tries to provide to other students too, and then they're trying their best to reach out to them and solve their problems. And like I have seen multiple, multiple people come in, talk about the same thing over and over again, and then that reminds me that, oh, I have seen this person, and I remember what they talked about. And I think it's really important, like they're, like, people are doing their part, that they're coming again and again and providing their opinions and what they really want to say. And then, and I really appreciate that you guys take your time and listen to them and not like, you came here last month, so you're not coming here again, and giving new people a chance. You guys are not doing that. So I mean, that's important, like you give, you give chance to people who are having problems to come in and talk about that. And I think, I find that to be really important because, like, where I come from, like, a woman is not even supposed to talk, and so many people come here.
Thank you so very much. Very insightful, and we appreciate the candor of your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. So now we concluded with public participation.
Okay. Thanks for telling me that. I don't know if I pulled a strike to Gail or not.
We need, if there's any questions by the board members at this time, and then the motion to close by Dr. Heinz.
Are there any questions?
No, but just one comment. Can she be added to the Communication Department? She's actually doing a better job. She's great.
Okay.
I need an answer, like everybody else. I'm just-
After college.
Okay.
He said after, she said after college. Okay. This concludes our public participation. Now, let's see, Board Member Dr. Heinz, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move for the passage of motion number 18-1205-M01 and the commencement of a closed session to consider matters permitted under Section 2C of the Open Meetings Act, subsections 1, 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 21 as specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. The meeting will now go into closed session. We need a roll call.
I need a roll call, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Board Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
We have six i's, zero nays. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into closed session now. Okay, we're reconvening the Board of Education meeting. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with closed session items from the General Counsel, and I will begin with new counsel retentions. These items do require a vote. The first report, the law firm Brady Connolly and Masuda PC. The second report, the law firm Cloud Law Group LLC. And the third report, the law firm Nihan Bambrick Kinsey and Larry. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong?
Yes.
Member Garza?
Yes.
Member, I'm sorry, Vice President Guzman?
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
And President Clark?
Yes.
Six i's, zero nays. I will continue with settlements. These items do require a vote. First report, settlement of CHG Alternative Education, DBA Camelot Educational, DBA Camelot Ed, Illinois LLC for Camelot. The second report, approved payment of proposed settlement regarding Wordlow versus Board and Yarborough. Third report, workers' compensation payment for lunsome settlement for Ralph Mendoza, case number 10WC16890. The fourth report, workers' compensation payment for lunsome settlement for LaShonda Smith, case number 16WC007824. The fifth report, workers' compensation payment for lunsome settlement for Ann Billingham Bakely, Bakie, I'm sorry, case number 14WC032019. The sixth report is amend Board Report 150225AR3, workers' compensation payment for lunsome settlement for Catherine Doolan, case number 14WC17718. The seventh report is approved payment of proposed settlement regarding HP. The eighth report is approved payment of proposed settlement regarding AS. And the ninth report, approved payment of proposed settlement regarding AK. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with law personnel matters, and these items do require a vote. The first report, appoint Senior Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Elizabeth Kate Barton. The second report, transfer and appoint Assistant Deputy General Counsel, Department of Law, Susan J. Best. The third report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Ahmed S. Islam. And the fourth report, appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, R. Howard Jump. And the fifth report, transfer and appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Jordan McDowell. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer, and these items do require a vote. We have the talent recommendation, transfer and appoint Chief Early Childhood Education Officer effective November 11/20. Officer effective November 11, 2018, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief early childhood education officer since November 11, 2018 for Michael Abello. Mr. President, I'll continue with the warning resolutions. The first report is the warning resolution for Paul DiGiulio, teacher assigned to Citywide Education General. The second report for warning resolution, Javier Gonzalez, tenure teacher assigned to Harriet Beecherstone Elementary School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote. The first report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Angelina Courtney, tenure teacher assigned to James R. Doolittle Elementary School. The second report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Moses Elias, tenure teacher assigned to Albert G. Lane Technical High School. The third report is the resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Alendina O'Connor, tenure teacher assigned to James H. Brown High School. The fourth report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Miguelia Perez, tenure teacher assigned to Joyce Kilmer Elementary School. The fifth report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Barbara Young, tenure teacher assigned to Brenneman Elementary School. The sixth report is the resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And the seventh report is the resolution approving the Chief Executive Officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary appointed teachers. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on November 30, 2018, the board members and the Office of the Board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary appointed teachers pursuant to Board Rule 4-1 and 105 I LCS 5/34-84. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and she also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of October 24, 2018 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on October 24, 2018 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Yes.
Member Dr. Garza.
I, yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Heinz.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero nays. And I believe Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of October 24, 2018, prepared by the Board Secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06b of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Yes.
Member Garza.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Heinz.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero nays. Mr. President, I'll continue with one real estate item. This item does require a vote. Authorization to purchase 5423 West 64th Place for the construction of a new high school to relieve overcrowding in the clearing community. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles in board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote. We have RS 1 and 2. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with the communication. This item does not require a vote. CO1 is the communication regarding the location of the board meeting of January 23, 2019, and it reads, this is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, January 23, 2019, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling 773-553-1600. For the January 23, 2019 board meeting, due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, advanced registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Friday, January 18 at 10:30 a.m., and will close on Tuesday, January 22 at 5 p.m. or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods, online, by phone, or in person. And to ensure the equity of access to address the board, an individual may not speak at two consecutive board meetings. In the event an individual registers to speak at a consecutive board meeting, the individual will not be called to address the board. Although advanced registration is recommended, you can also register to observe a meeting on the day of the meeting via same-day in-person observer registration at 42 West Madison Street Lobby. And the registration time, it opens at 10:15 a.m. and will remain open for the duration of the board meeting. Same-day in-person observer registrations are taken on a first-come, first-served basis as seats become available, and the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers for the two hours. Mr. President, I'll continue with items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and we have EX1. And for the record, I would like to note that the transfer of funds included the October 2018 transfer of funds as well as the November 2018 November of funds. And the November 2018 transfer of funds was draft on agenda, and the final will be included in the agenda of action. There was no content changes. We only needed signatures on the last page. I'll continue with EX2. We then have EX3, 4, 5. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Guzman on EX5. I will continue with EX6, OP1, AR1, AR2, PR1, PR2. And for the record, I would like to note that PR2 has been revised, and the final will be included in the agenda of action. And the correction was done on the term section on page 1. I will then continue with PR3, 4, 5, and 6. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Clark on PR6. Continue with PR7, 8. We then have PR9. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Clark on PR9. I will continue with PR10. We then have PR11. And for the record, I would like to note that PR11 was draft on agenda, and the final will be included in the agenda of action. And in this case, we only needed the CEO signature, and there were no content revisions. I will continue with PR12. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Board Member Garza on PR12 for Technica Environmental Services Only, which was noted as vendor number nine on the board report. Moving on to PR13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with one additional item that does not require a vote, and that is for AR3. Mr. President, this item just needs to be accepted by the board.
Please mark received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1759.57][1759.57][music]